Yes. Yes. No, no, yeah, 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 yes. Yeah. 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 Let me just try. Yes, yes, I know, absolutely, yeah. Yes, yeah, sure. Sure. No, no, no. No, no, that's all. That's all. Yes, yes, yes. So what we do is do start off as a medical.
Yeah.
Right, and then you start off by giving a general overview of your plans for the for the community for the area. If you have done already, or if you still intend to do it.
Yeah.
Then you can call John O.
No, the court shop.
Okay, court shop, yeah. John O, the one on the court shop in the news. There's a few, there's something, okay, okay, no problem.
Okay.
And then I will speak.
Thanks, brother.
Okay. And Tiv dot com is the only thing. We're good to do. And then you will open it up for some questions, you know?
So he's at the service for the forty five?
Nine o'clock, yeah, yeah. So when you're ready, yeah?
Yes.
So that is it, that is it. So what we'll do is to do a prayer. Yeah. Okay, intro by par rep. And John O. Tiv dot coms. Rock. If he doesn't come by that time, then I'll speak. Yes. But that is, that is the mic for the, um, okay, yeah, you can start with that. Stand man, stand and address your.
Okay, I think this is thus the appropriate time for us to start this meeting. We are a bit late. And without any further ado, I would like to call on Mrs. Carol Langford to lead us in prayer. Carol, please.
Thank you. Let's put ourselves in the presence of the Lord. Our Father and our God, we thank you for this moment. We thank you that we are able to come together as a community to tell the Lord, to tell you what is our needs and what is what we want for ourselves and our community. And we thank you for the day, we thank you for the, those who have been here with us this afternoon. Thank you for the mercy that you have granted unto us. Father, we ask you please to send your spirit within us, that you are able to think wisely and talk so that whatever is said today, all of us will benefit from what is said. Father, we pray that our government will continue to work for the good of all. We pray, Lord, for unity and peace, and that everybody will work together for the common good of everyone. Come, Lord Jesus, take control of this meeting so that when you are through this meeting, Lord, we be satisfied that your will has been done in our life. Make our discussion be lively. If you are criticized, you not help us to be constructive for criticisms so that we'll move forward and make Monjon the community it has always meant to be. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Let us all be seated. And for those of you still standing on the outside, there is much space available. First of all, as the parliamentary representative for the Monjon River constituency, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome every one of you here gathered from this constituency to include villagers of Monjon, Rivestiric, Grandfaux. And to all you wonderful other friends who have taken your time off from today to be here at this meeting to join us in Monjon, let me also welcome you to Monjon. To my most distinguished guests here this evening, first of all, I want to recognize the Honorable Ian Douglas, the parliamentary representative for the Portes of Constituency, also the Honorable Johnson Drago, my nearby par rep, and that's the par rep for the Caseros constituency. Joining us again is Dr. Kenneth Daru, the parliamentary representative for the Pinesaban constituency, and also my colleague in the Ministry of Health, the Minister for Health. Although I did not give the, I did not address my other colleagues here as ministers, but we'll come to that in a while. I also want to recognize Mr. Esri and also the parliamentary representative for the Granby constituency, Honorable Charles. So for you, those of you here, I want to say that in Monjon, we are privileged to have a very high-powered team of ministers. And that is why we're expecting most of you, those listening here on your televisions, on your radios at Monjon, I would prefer that you come in here and let your eyes boil a piece so that when the appropriate time comes, you will ask the questions and concerns of this constituency. As the parliamentary representative for this constituency, I want to say that this meeting is the third meeting that we have had as part of a series of meetings islandwide to inform, to educate, to tell our constituents what is happening within this country, and more specifically, our constituencies. I can tell you, my dear people, that over the years, you will have known that much development has taken place in this constituency, in Monjon, and also on a national level. That is why we're expecting you, the people gathered here this evening, to express your concerns, to ask questions when given the opportunity after we have heard the various speeches from our ministers. I will start off first of all as the parliamentary representative to give you introduction of this meeting and to tell you of some of the development plans that we have had for this constituency. Following myself and following my presentation, sorry, we'll invite Mr. Drago, or the Honorable Drago, to talk to us on agriculture, followed by the Honorable Daru, who will talk to us on matters of development, health and environment, and other national issues. And most importantly, I am very privileged tonight to have the parliamentary representative for Portsmouth who has traveled for such a very far distance to be here with us this evening to also share with us matters of development. So welcome every one of you here in Monjon. And let me thank you thus far for coming, and we look forward towards having a very fruitful and very positive meeting in Monjon. First of all, just to give a brief description of this constituency, particularly in the village of Monjon. I want to say, my dear people, that Monjon is a rather small community and is part of the broader constituency with a population of roughly about three hundred people. And Monjon is no different from many other communities in the southeast, especially the northeastern to southeastern part of this country, where we see that the major form of employment and the major area where people earn their income is particularly in agriculture. Yes, we have a few persons who live and work in urban areas, but the population what we have seen has been dwindling like many other communities, like many other villages. And persons migrate to urban areas for greener pastures. So our experiences here in Monjon is no different from other parts of this country. It is basically just what is happening as we see the development trends, both at a rural and urban level. As the parliamentary representative, I must say that it has been a privilege working with most of my constituents from Monjon, from Rivestiric, and Grandfaux. And I can tell you, my dear people, that when I came in here as the parliamentary representative for this constituency, we saw a lot of needs in this constituency. And for some persons that are listening may have said I hear you say that already. But the fact is, my dear people, that is the reality. In Monjon, just before two thousand and nine, there was some budding issues of development. We had issues, for example, with respect to our roads. We had issues with our water systems, our education system, infrastructure, sports. And I will not go on in very detail yet, but just to give a summary of some of the major areas where we saw the need for development, that is what it was before two thousand and nine. But when the persons in this constituency was able to have me serve there as a par rep from two thousand and nine up to this time, every one of you will admit that they have seen a difference in Monjon, that they have seen a difference in Rivestiric, and they have seen a difference in Grandfaux. And that is why I came here tonight as the par rep to remind us that yes, there has been development in this constituency. And even still to tell us that there is even more need to ensure the continued development of our constituency. That is why you are invited here tonight to identify the problems, but to give you, the constituents, an opportunity to talk about the concerns and problems so that we can see the continued growth and development of our village. Of Monjon, and permit me if I say every once in a while, Rivestiric and Monjon, sorry, Grandfaux, because this are all part of the constituents that are expected to be gathered here this evening. Let me first of all, my dear people, start on the issues of our roads. I mean, just think back before two thousand and nine. The roads were in critical shape. The bus drivers, when they were transporting our schoolchildren from Caseros or even passengers from Roseau would have dropped people down on the main road by the bus stop, that was the picture. What we have seen today is the total rehabilitation of the road from the Monjon bus stop, taking you way up to the top of Monjon by the playing field. And that is the type of improvement that we have seen in Monjon over the years. And every one of us who know Monjon well know that this road is now a highway because people drive there so quickly and some of us who drive on it so often forget that that was not the situation just about seven years back. The works on road continued over the last seven years. For instance, we had the road, the Backstreet Road, taking us down by Mabibson, and we saw sections of that road being improved upon. We saw sections of the road taking it down into the Cadence Home way at the top of Monjon. So this in itself has created much more easier access to the dwelling homes of the people of Monjon. And I, at this time, I will focus on Monjon's development because we are here in Monjon, and we have had our meeting already in Rivestiric where I elaborated on the development of Rose in Rivestiric and also in Grandfaux. But not only did we see the development of our roads, but in terms of our education system, the education of our children, we saw the rehabilitation of the Monjon primary school. And since I have been par rep here, I can tell you I have seen rehabilitation works on the Monjon school three times, on three different occasions. Each time we see works being undertaken for various persons, for, sorry, for various purposes. And up to recent, up to January, we know that there was much renovation done, especially to ensure that that school became bad proof because of the issues of bat infestation and other pests that they were experiencing. Up to this afternoon, I was at the school, and I can tell you that the teachers, the schoolchildren, are much comfortable because they are no longer experiencing the difficulties that they had just over five, six months just prior to January two thousand and seventeen. So we have seen continued renovations to improve that part of our school structure. But not only is that an important development, there are other important developments that have taken place in Monjon. We have seen, for example, the provision of a school to transport the schoolchildren from Froyal and some sections of Rivestiric into Monjon, making it much easier for the parents, not necessarily Monjon parents, but the parents from Rivestiric. We have seen that we have now the provision of a school bus that takes us into Monjon transporting our children on a daily basis. So that in itself is a very important school for the children, for the schoolchildren. That in itself is a very important thing because we are now seeing that children are punctual, they are now exposed to the elements of rain and dust and sand and even the dangers of traffic on the main road. So we are now seeing children now gathering at the Monjon school, and school can begin on time because children are there on time. So that in itself is a very important thing for the development of our people, my people. Also, what we have seen in Monjon is the continued transportation of our children to the Caseros Secondary School. My dear people, prior to two thousand and nine, I can attest that a number of the schoolchildren who would traverse to the Caseros Secondary School on a daily basis, many of them who left on the roads struggling to get home. And today, what we have seen is the provision of buses to transport the children of Monjon and also Rivestiric and Grandfaux to the Caseros Secondary School without any fear of parents wondering whether the children will get back home on time or whether they would be getting to school early. And that is the reality of our situation. And some of us, when we have these types of development, we must not take it for granted that it is a must. Because I have been here in this constituency living, and we know as individuals, as villagers, as residents, that prior to that period before I served you as the par rep, that what we had was persons in the private capacity transporting children, and you, the parents, had the responsibility to pay for the transportation of the schoolchildren. And today, we have a government that is coming to the needs of the people by ensuring that they place emphasis on the education of our people, by ensuring that our children can move onto the buses early in the morning, get to the Caseros Secondary School, and transported back to their homes safely. And that in itself, my dear people, is a very important development for your schoolchildren. But not only are children transported to secondary schools, we have gone further to ensure that every child here who goes to the state college is being transported. So no child at any one level of education is being left back. So that is what this government has done to ensure that we continue to improve the well-being of your people in Monjon. And I'm very happy as a par rep to report that, I don't want to talk about figures because you will well realize that as I said in my introduction, the Monjon communities are a rather small community, so I don't want to say that the bus transports five children to the college and go on with this type of statistics. I'm just speaking generally to say that in Monjon, when it comes to the education of our people, we have the government providing the necessary services to ensure that our children are transported to school and that the children can get back to their homes safe at night. And that is the development of the people. And my people, let me tell you that while the government is making that important contribution towards the education of our people, we have our own responsibilities. And let us not leave it on the government alone and believe that it is government's responsibility. Yes, we as governments, we are making these contributions towards the development of our people. But you as parents, you have a right to ensure that you encourage the children to do what they have to do by ensuring that, for example, that they study hard, they say learn well, and you know all the attributes that will come with that. But fortunately, my dear people from Monjon, we have a caring government, a government that looks after the people. I can go on and on with respect to the education of our children and other benefits and other services that have been made available. I can, for example, mention of the school books, textbooks, him that our children are now receiving and preventing you, the parents, from going to the bookstores to buy books at that high cost. So you have the savings coming back to your pocket. We have also the uniform assistance that you, the children here, are receiving. The parents are now being avoided the cost of purchasing all this cost of uniforms and books for children's education. So if you were to make your calculations, you know, parents, you know well how much it would have cost you if you had to go to the bookstores, if you had to go to the stores to purchase those items. And if you have one child, two children, three children, four children, multiply the cost, and you will see the amount of savings that you are making. And that is being done by a government that cares for you, the people. So that is with respect to education. And I don't want to go on too long because I have very other important speakers here who have to make a contribution. But I want to tell you, my people, that the developmental needs in this constituency, constituency, sorry, continues. On the water systems, nobody in Monjon now complains of water, no water in the taps. No one complains. And since I have been here as the par rep, I've ensured that water is brought to the homes of the people of this community. And everybody here can no longer complain of shortages of water, except if God forbids, we have, say, periods of drought or bad weather conditions where the system is interrupted. But everybody now is comfortable because the most ugly thing to experience is to open the tap in the morning, and you cannot get water to feed the children. You can't get water to do your domestic needs. So everything is okay as far as water is concerned. And I can boast that in this constituency, if I'm to go further with respect to development of our water systems, Rivestiric is even much more comfortable. We have seen in Rivestiric the extension of water systems and taking water to more households. So I can now say, for example, in the community of Rivestiric, every household in Rivestiric have access to water. And the same goes to Grandfaux, where every household in Grandfaux have access to portable water. And this in itself, I can tell you, my people, is a very important goal when you look at the overall goals of a country, a country's development, when we know that we can provide pipe, portable pipe and water to our community. We're talking about health, the absence of disease. It means that people no longer can access water systems that they are not sure about which can get them sick. And everybody who collects the water from the tap, they are happy, they are comfortable because they know that they are drinking water that is safe. And that is one of the important things that I have done as a par rep in this constituency is to ensure that you, the people, have access to portable water. My dear people, the development of this constituency continues. We have seen in the area of agriculture the supply of inputs to many of our farmers. And I know that there are farmers outside there listening and would like me to talk about the question of inputs. Myself as the par rep, I know I have encouraged, for example, on numerous occasions, the formation of farmers groups. Because I believe, and this government believes, that one of the ways we can empower our communities, our farming communities, is to encourage persons to come together. Because it would be difficult for a par rep to be listening to the complaints of individual farmers and to supply the individual needs for everybody that can be taxed in. But if we have farmers who come together as a group, we can easily listen to the needs and concerns of farmers and eventually make the supply of needs that they have requested. And on numerous occasions, farmers have received inputs, and farmers, you know that's true. And this government will continue to make inputs available fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides, and what are the needs that you request. But I wanted to encourage farmers here in Monjon to continue to group themselves and do not operate as individual farmers because that is not the way now for farming in this country and this community. I'm saying so because every one of you farmers here were also ten, fifteen years ago banana farmers. And when we started as banana farmers, we started as groups, farmers groups. In other words, you could have only been certified as a farmer group in order to make sure that you box your bananas. We know those things. So this farming practice must continue as we continue to diversify and look into the area of other farming produce that we have to get done. So I'm encouraging farmers to continue to group themselves, and that will make it much easier for me as a par rep to help you. I know, for example, there are challenges in some sections of our road, in Morlock, in Hote, but again, these concerns will be addressed. As far as I have been told, been in communication with some of the farmers in that area, um, the concerns are not so much critical, but there is need for the improvement of roads in these areas. In the area of sports, a playing field at Monjon, at the top of Monjon, we know that we have seen some improvement. Not the fullest of improvements, not what probably all the youth gathered here would have liked to see. But in Monjon, we know for sure that the playing field is much better than before. I have been in discussion with a group of young guys from Monjon who have interest in developing, or the continued development of the playing field by putting a small basketball court so that the young men of Monjon can get to that area to do their practices. Again, I must say that as a parliamentary representative, I recognize that need, and we will, as time passes, meaning that throughout the year, ensure that we develop a court, not a full court, as I have been seen from myself in terms of needs, but we'll develop at least a half court so that we don't have our young guys playing basketball right across over there where you can see the basketball net is located. So we'll be taking you to the playing field where we can see a much improved surface for our young people. My dear people, I want to tell you that in area of housing, we have done tremendous efforts towards ensuring that people have much more comfortable housing in Monjon. And the same applies to Rivestirik, the same applies to Grandfond. In Monjon, several persons in Monjon have received housing assistance. And if I'm to start making a survey from the bus stop in Monjon and walk through the top of Monjon, you, the constituents of Monjon, we have realized that over seventy-five percent of persons living in Monjon have received housing assistance by way of ensuring that we get some galvanage, we get some lumber, we get some cement, and as according to your need, that has been done. But let me say to you, my dear people, that with respect to housing assistance, the Labour Party government will continue to ensure that we see an improvement of housing of our people. We will ensure that people who still continue the needs for housing repairs, we will ensure that people get these supplies. I can tell you that apart from the housing sanitation program, we also have the ongoing washroom program where the government's policy is to eliminate pit latrines and provide separate tanks, washrooms for our people of this constituency and nation as a whole. Persons in Monjon have been benefiting. The numbers, again, I said, are not large numbers. I don't want to talk statistics. So if I say like ten, probably, why is ten alone? No, it's forty, four hundred you're talking about. I don't want to really use statistics because of our population sizes. But I can tell you for sure that there is a dear need for persons benefiting on the washroom program. We have already just recently built just about twelve washrooms for residents of Monjon, and we'll continue to ensure that every householder in Monjon has access to an improved washroom facility. That will be constructed, will not take into consideration any party support, whether you're pink, you're blue, you're red, everybody will benefit. And this is the government's policy to ensure that we eliminate pit latrines. Because you, my people, you residents, you know the discomfort of the pit latrines, you know that, right? We know how difficult it can be accessed at nights, how difficult it can be accessed even when we have alien health problems or we have persons who are physically challenged in the homes. And that is the government's policy to ensure that we see improved bathroom facilities, improved washroom facilities for people of this constituency or people of Monjon. And Monjon people, be grateful and say thank you to the government whenever we receive these facilities. Because it is because of this government's policy for development, for improving the health and well-being of our people, why we are ensuring that every householder in this constituency, every householder in Monjon can access a washroom facility. And the Prime Minister has made it quite clear in terms of that policy that by December two thousand and seventeen, everybody in Monjon who doesn't have washroom facilities will now have access to a good sanitary washroom facility that includes a bathroom and a toilet. My people of Monjon, I know that you're hearing, you know, I can tell you that much has been done with respect to our development. And I like to repeat those things, I said housing assistance, I said washrooms, but even in Monjon, we have seen the construction of new houses for some individuals. Yes, in Monjon, we have seen the construction of new houses. At least six new houses have been built for the residents of Monjon over the years. And these were individuals who in dire need of housing. And today, I can say that those persons are sleeping much more comfortably because of the concern that they expressed when they were living in those very poor housing conditions. So as a parliamentary representative, I will continue to ensure that there is improved housing for our residents of Monjon. I will now move to a very important area that continues to create the developments and improvements and something that continues to ensure that we have a good environment in this community of Monjon. And I'm talking about the National Employment Program. My people, we know that traditionally, the people of Monjon has been people who would take care of their homes and their surroundings, isn't it, Monjon people? Today, we are even much more empowered because we now have in Monjon the National Employment Program that continues to empower people, that continues to employ our people, that continues to ensure that this program keeps Monjon clean and tidy and creating the ambience in Monjon that tells our visitors that Monjon is a beautiful and clean community. And I must congratulate the persons who on a daily basis are exposed to these weather conditions, the hot sun, just to ensure that they keep the drains, the sidewalks, keep the properties adjoining homes clean. And in Monjon, I can tell you that the program is doing very well. We have five persons, I tell you, I don't want to talk numbers, you know, I know this constituency is a rather small constituency, if I have five persons that are employed on the National Employment Program, particularly for doing cleaning and beautification, I can tell you that this program is going pretty okay, and we are satisfied that Monjon is a much cleaner and a much greener community. But I must confess that this small number is not a reflection of what exists in the constituency. In this constituency, we have just about sixty people that are employed under the National Employment Program. Just for cleaning and beautification, we have thirty persons employed, we have five persons employed in Rivestirik, and then we have twenty persons employed in Grandfond. So that gives us a total of thirty persons employed on the cleaning and beautification. And these are individuals, my dear people, who would be searching for jobs, some of them did not get the opportunity for secondary education, and they are single parents, and they have children going to school, and they need the financial support. So thank God, thank the government of Dominica for ensuring that we now have a program in place to ensure that our persons who cannot gain employment at the colleges, at the big institutions can now earn an income and also contribute positively towards the development of their community. I say to you, my people, not only are persons doing cleaning and beautification, but we also have persons who are employed in the Total Conservation Program, we have persons who are employed at the Monjon Free School, they're being paid under the National Employment Program. We have education mentors in Grandfond that are assisting the children of the very same parents, some of them who do not have the capacity at home to give the children the backup at home for schoolwork and so on. So we have these education mentors in Grandfond, we have persons engaging in the school feeding program in Grandfond. And I could just go on and on with respect to the various disciplines under which persons are employed under the National Employment Program. We must give thank you to the government of Dominica, and we must give thank you to our leader, our honourable Prime Minister, who continues to ensure he thinks of innovative ways to keep our people employed. And people of Monjon, we are grateful, I know you are grateful, you know, even if we are not always very loud and vocal to state, I know that we are happy for what is now being done with respect to our employment of our people. If I'm to continue, my people, again, another very important area that continues to impact on the people of Monjon and in the constituency as a whole is within the area of small business support. So this constituency is not different from any others where you may be hearing that persons are benefiting on the small business and for us to think that we all are benefiting now. Our people are truly benefiting. In fact, just recently, we had forty-nine thousand dollars made available for small business support in this constituency. Not only are our small business entrepreneurs from Grandfond and Rivestirik benefited, but right in Monjon, the very few small businesses that we have in Monjon, they also benefited from that amount of forty-nine thousand dollars that was made available for this constituency. So there is reason to give support to our small business entrepreneurs. There are also areas of small business enterprises that continues development. For example, in beekeeping, we have, for example, a group of young farmers, that's about six positive young men who are doing beekeeping in Rivestirik, and I can tell you these guys are full of energy, full of energy, a very positive enterprise, and that is going on well in Rivestirik. We have also in Monjon, Rivestirik and Grandfond, a number of young women who are engaged in organic farming, and they are being called the Southeast Organic Women's Farmers Group. These people are doing positive things for organic farming in this constituency. I can see a few of them here, and I can tell you the people in Monjon, especially the women that are engaged in this positive activity, in this positive enterprise, that you must continue to give the support, give the support to the group to ensure that it becomes a fully fledged, positive and organized group. You know the various things that you are engaged in by ensuring that we continue to provide vegetables, organic vegetables, and you have your various markets, and I must say that the Ministry of Commerce and Small Business is happy to be working with you. We have situations whereby persons are being paid to assist you, the women, to ensure that you can cultivate the soils, that you ensure that you cut the weeds just to ease you up in terms of your hard labor and ensure that we see the cultivation of organic crops. Also, in terms of small business entrepreneurship, that might not be a situation in Monjon, but in Grandfond, we have a situation where we have constructed a house for growing broiler boots. And this house, where we engage in the growing of broiler chicken, is to ensure that we supply or these individuals supply chicken to the national laboratory. We have had a first trial where there was a pilot program where we engage young men and women from Monjon, Rivestirik and Grandfond, and train them in broiler production. So some of those persons have the skills in the growing of broiler chicken. But this is not all, this is not all. I want to encourage you, the other young men from Monjon, who have business ideas, especially in the area of poultry management, poultry growing, particularly broilers with an intention to supply the national laboratory, that you must begin to put your plans together and challenge me as the parlay, challenge me to help you source the necessary funds so that we can see an improvement and increase in the number of persons who have the interest in the growing of broilers for the national laboratory. But apart from that, I mean, there are bigger programs, the Ministry for Agriculture will tell you much more with respect to monies that are being made available to farmers through the aid bank and other sources. I'm not going to dwell in these two areas. But I can say to you, the young men of Monjon who have interest in broiler production, that together so that we can see more young persons in Monjon engaged in the production of broiler. And that is the reality situation, my dear people. Because really, in Monjon, what we doing? Farming, not only cultivating bananas and planting and dashing, but as has been said for years now, we must continue to diversify. And if you haven't learned that lesson yet, let us not be caught to be the last set of persons to be getting ourselves engaged in these activities. Our people here must begin to diversify and as a result, see how best we can earn the income, bring it to put food on our table, additional food on our table. The opportunities are available. And if you take your time and think back, there is hardly ever any opportunity that has been in your hands other than now, where farmers now can access financial institutions, that farmers now can take advantage of opportunities for small business units, that things that never existed before. Now is the time where so many opportunities are available, and we must get out of where we are, stop complaining and take advantage of the opportunities that are available. It's only when we do that, we're going to see the continued development of Monjon. And don't think it's the government that has to go and do it for you. Yes, we have a role to play as government. But you, the people of Monjon, let us take out that kind of political thing that continues to divide us, and let us ensure that we build Monjon just as we see the continued development of other areas in this country. I'm not going to mention the other villages where we see positive things happening, but let us take an example of what is happening in other areas and bring it right into Monjon because Monjon has vast lands, empty lands that are available for farming. You have water systems, what else do you want? Support, yes, these things are available, and all it takes, let us complain less, and let us put those efforts into positive action, and we will see more positive results. Yes, my people, again, let me say with respect to some of the things we expect to see as a continued development for this constituency. I want to tell you that the government has approved an amount of four hundred and four thousand dollars for the continued development of our road infrastructure in this constituency. Four hundred and four thousand dollars. I didn't say four hundred dollars, you know, I said four hundred and four thousand dollars. And out of that four hundred and four thousand dollars, sixty-seven thousand dollars will go towards the continued rehabilitation of that back road taking us from Mr. Elwes' place back into Carrolls area, and if you go up, taking us to Mabip's area, we're going to see that improvement of this access road in the community done by this month, two thousand and seventeen, talking about April two thousand and seventeen. I want to say to you that not only is this development going to take place in this constituency, several roads in this constituency have been earmarked, sorry, for development. For example, in Grandfond, as I said in Rivestirik and Grandfond, we will see the rehabilitation of a written-in-wall next to the health center. That wall, we saw an edge failure years back, and it poses some danger to the community, and a month of ninety-seven thousand dollars has been approved for this road, and we will see continued development and improvement of that section of road. In the playing field, new playing field area in Grandfond, again, another sum of money has been earmarked and approved for the development of that route to that area. And down in Degua in Grandfond, we will see the continued improvement of the drains in Degua. For those of you who have been traveling Degua and Grandfond recently, you'll have seen where we commenced on one section of that road. But we'll be doing the other section of the Grandfond road in Degua to augment, to uplift the conditions in that area and create a better ambiance in the conditions in that area and create a better ambience in, in Grandfond. I want to tell you, my dear people, that there will be continued development in that constituency, particularly in the River Street area. And I need to just mention that for those persons listening on radio, that not only is Grandfond benefiting, but there are other parts of this constituency that are enjoying that cake. For example, in the Fonda, sorry, Four Morgan, we know Four Morgan area, alright, if I am to give a little description, for those of us who drove from Rosalie, taking you into River Street, um we saw a, a serious edge failure where we saw some drums on the side of the road, we call that area Four Morgan, there was a serious failure there, something last, September last year. And as I have told my colleagues in Cabinet, I did not want to express, experience the conditions or problems that my honourable Peter Sanger experienced when we saw what Erika did to Britisha. I did indicate that this road is as critical as the Britisha gorge. And if for some reason we were to have heavy rains and that section fails, it means that people living River Street and beyond, they will be experiencing another catastrophe as was the situation in Britisha. I must tell you, my dear people, that an amount of one point two million dollars has been approved for the construction of this edge failure. So River Street is gonna get a big portion of the pie, including the improvement of steps around the Pentecostal area to take you to the dwelling houses above that area, to include the rehabilitation of drains and improve access to dwelling homes in the Fual area, we're looking at an amount of thirty-five thousand dollars that has been approved. So this constituency, I must tell you, my dear residents, is benefiting from the pie, the bigger pie for the continued development of this country. Sometimes people say, well, parlor, why come they say, well, that place gets so much money and what we get? And I say, no, we must listen. And that's why I expect you know, villagers of Monjon to be listening, just as not only villagers of Monjon, living in Monjon, but villagers of Monjon who are living out of Monjon, because we all know residents of Monjon, that a number of our residents are living out of Monjon. So we are going to benefit from the pie, we are going to enjoy the continued development of this constituency. But I'm not gonna close and not make mention of the fact that a lot of the funding, a lot of the money that is being made available for these programmes is coming under the Citizen by Investment Programme. The programme that some persons here have painted to be, yes, a passport, passport, passport programme, whatever you call it, but I'm saying that the funding is coming under the CBI programme. So we should be happy that we as constituents are benefiting from a programme that argues to do well for you, the people of Monjon and River Street and Grandfond. I see time is running away now from me and I just need to, to run it up because I have some other speakers who like to speak even ten times much better than I speak. And persons say sometimes when I, I don't speak, but I can tell you when I get the opportunity, I can probably tell. So, but I honestly, I think I have said it in a very nutshell, what are some of the concerns that we have in this constituency? I have, at least within the time I have been speaking, gave you some of the concerns that we experienced over the past years and I have also told you some of the things that we expect to see as development in this constituency. Before closing, I must make mention to you, the parents of the Monjon primary, that before the year ends, in my next submission of projects to the Minister for Constituency Empowerment, who is sitting next before me here, I'll be submitting a proposal for the improvement of a small cafeteria for the Monjon school. I have had discussions with the principal over and over with respect to that development and I can assure you, their residents, that that has been said enough and as is sometimes said, enough is enough, we will see before the year end, the construction of a small cafeteria that will ensure that when children get to school, they can sit right in this important ambience and ensure that they enjoy the benefits of the environment that has been made available for them. Before closing, my dear people, let me say one important thing. You'll realise Dr Darrow is right here, he is my colleague minister, who was the portfolio for the Ministry of Health and Environment. But I honestly would have felt much bad had I not said nothing about health, because I know when he comes to speak about health, he'll want to say everything. So I rather run in front and say some things about the Ministry of Health and Environment, particularly in the area that concerns my portfolio, that is the environment, and just to say a few things. My dear people, after Erika, what we saw happening was that the ministry continues to be challenged with pests and diseases, particularly important pests that has to do with the question of the transmission of Zika and chicken gonia. I want to say that you, the people of Monjon, made me feel proud when we embarked on that national campaign to ensure that we had a serious clean-up of this community and I was very much abeased. You, you moved in numbers, you had the children from the Casper's, who attend, sorry, the Casper's Secondary School and you cleaned up Monjon, cleaned up River Street, cleaned up Grandfond. I am happy that activities like this receives that level of success in this community. And I would like to urge you residents to continue to do all what is necessary to ensure that we keep our communities clean. As I said earlier on, you have the National Employment Programme that continues to give that support, but within your home situation, your home environment, where you need to ensure that you eliminate the breeding of mosquitoes that causes Zika and chicken gonia, you have to continue to play your role as residents to ensure that we keep Monjon free of dengue and Zika and also chicken gonia. I can tell you that within the ministry, we, yes, we have a little concern with respect to issues like solid waste and other matters, we, we have, while we have those issues, we have other positive things happening with respect to the construction of the new national hospital and soon the new Maricopa hospital, Dr Darrow will elaborate a little bit more. But I just felt that I just needed to just elaborate very, 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 very briefly on this important matter with respect to your efforts and support in the continued improvement of Monjon. Finally, I want to thank you residents of Monjon. I want to thank you residents of River Street and Grandfond for your continued support towards the development of your community, my constituency. As parlor, without your efforts and support, I can't do it alone. I can only urge you to continue to give that full support so that we see the continued development of this constituency in whatever area of development, be it infrastructure, be it roads, be it education, be it agriculture, or social programmes, sent here and over, which I did not talk about, somebody else will talk about it. But please give the support that is needed for the continued development of not just yourselves, but I'm concerned about the very young children who we need to build that foundation for now, so that we can see the continued development of our people. I'm happy and I'm proud, as the parlor for that constituency, to be working with a team of dedicated workers, dedicated ministers. Look at where they are tonight, after they have attended several functions and they themselves are like, oh, they have, they will personally home things to take care of and they are here making the sacrifices to ensure they can come and talk to us here this evening. So let us, as the people, continue to give support to the Government of Dominica, give support to your Prime Minister, the Honourable Dr Russell Skerritt, your parliamentary representative. And in so doing, I can ensure that we will see the continued growth of our people of Monjon, of River Street and Grandfond. Thank you for your listening and I wish we a very positive evening this evening. Okay, I just forgot I have dual roles here this evening. I realised that I'm still the, the chair of the occasion. I thought I was gonna take a pause, it's a little hot, but I will now call on to another person. We're not gonna sleep tonight, you know, people in Monjon. I'm gonna introduce you to another very hardworking parlor. I'm gonna introduce you to the Honourable Johnson Drago, the Minister for Agriculture and please give him a listen here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, my dear friend, the parliamentary representative for the Monjon constituency, the Honourable Ivo Stevenson. Let me recognise among us tonight, the Minister for Health, the Honourable Kenneth Darrow. Also, we have with us the Honourable Ian Douglas, the Minister for Trade and Small Business. We have with us as well, the Minister for Sports, Youth, Constituency Empowerment, with us here, the Honourable Justin the Charles. Also with us is the Special Project Coordinator, my assistant in the Ministry of Agriculture, Mr Esprit, Nicholas Esprit. Let me also recognise the wife of your parlor, Mrs Stevenson, and the other persons who are here visiting and you, the good people of Monjon. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you. I am happy to be here to share with you briefly some of the initiatives, programmes within the Ministry of Agriculture geared towards your advancement and which I want you, the people of Monjon, to take advantage of. To advance your field, your production and of course, to advance the economic standard of living here in the Monjon community for agriculture. And I'm gonna go straight into it. The government having recognised your hard work, the challenges that you face in agriculture, the cost of labour, the cost of inputs, the cost of managing pests and diseases, placed into the aid bank, ten million dollars for on lending to you, the farmers of Monjon. And I hope the farmers of Monjon are taking advantage of this opportunity, because I know you are very good at your dashin' and I have heard of your attempt to diversify into other crops. And of course, agriculture is serious business. You know the challenges we face with the bananas and since we've been encouraging you to diversify your farm, we realise that you're going to be needing some funds to assist you. So we've placed this ten million dollars facility at the aid bank for on lending to farmers and the government recognise that not all of you are large farmers, so therefore they are categorised towards taking advantage of this facility. From the first one thousand to fifteen thousand, you, the farmers of Monjon, were interested in this facility. You need no collateral, but you must have a guaranteed market. And it's important here in, 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 in Monjon to share with you on this point of a guaranteed market, because I know after the droughts of twenty fourteen, we made a lot of fertilisers available to you through the government structure, through the government of Morocco, through the BAM programme and a lot of you farmers went into the rehabilitation of your dashin' farms. And I know we had a challenge for the marketing of all of the dashin' we produced at that time. I'm saying to you going forward, my dear people of Monjon, those of you interested in dashin' as a business, there is still money to be made in dashin'. As we speak, the European market, they are taking two containers monthly from the, um through Winfresh, through the backhouses, they were exporting some forty-five thousand pounds of dashin' to the European markets. The backhouse as well is pushing a lot of dashin' out, but you must be part of a programme. The idea of just going into the farm and establishing three acres of dashin' and hoping somebody pass to purchase your dashin' is now a thing of the past. So you have to work with the hoxers, you have to work with all of the exporters that we have around the island, you have to work with the backhouse in particular. And let me tell you something, people of Monjon, Monjon is not too far to engage in a programme with the backhouse in Postmont and Roseau through Dexia for the supply of dashin'. This is the only way you will have a guaranteed market and I'm stressing on this point because I want us to deal with what we call the glut on the market. I want you, the farmers who are going into dashin', to know who your exporter is going to be, whether it's through the hoxers and the other private exporters we have across the island, or most importantly, through the packing houses that we have established through Dexia. Go to Dexia, visit them in Roseau and talk to them, let them know that I intend to continue doing my dashin', but I want to ensure that I have a guaranteed market for that dashin'. Additionally, farmers have been complaining about, have been complaining about the rejects that they have after they have worked very hard, the extent particular may say to them, the dashin' is either too small or it's too big. I want to say to you, the farmers tonight, that if you work with your exporter and the extension offices of your area, in your case, the agricultural station in La Plaine, if you work with them and they are aware of the size of the dashin', you need to be producing, they will assist you so that you can plant on time, fertilise on time and the spacing will have to be accurate to give you the size of dashin' that your market demands. So if a farmer wants a very large dashin', his dashin' cannot be very close, there must be adequate space between the dashin' and if he wants small dashin', then he can have his, his farm dashin' very, very close. So these are things that you need to know, but you must work with the extension officers of your areas and I'm sticking on dashin' a bit because I know dashin' is a major production for you, the people in this area. As your parlor said, we are about to receive, we are, we are in the process of clearing fertilisers, we will be clearing some four thousand, six hundred bags of fertiliser and you will get your share of that fertiliser. Additionally, we have started selling fertiliser for you, the farmers, at forty-five dollars a bag. I just gave, um, an order to the Ministry of Agriculture, in spite of the fact that we are bringing in this fertiliser from the BAM, from, and from Morocco, to order additional fertiliser so that we can sell to the farmers at a subsidised price. And we still have the facilities in, in, um, in Roseau where you can get your fertilisers, they, they, um, they, and additionally, Dexia is now bringing in fertiliser on the island. So there is always a regular supply of fertiliser on the island to assist our farmers. But you, the farmer, must be a serious farmer, you must be engaged in a business, you can no longer give two hours to your farm and consider you in business. For persons who employ, whether in the private or public sector, they give eight hours a day, regular. And for some of them, they must give overtime for the company to succeed. So it's the same thing for you, the farmer. If you are into agriculture, you must eat as a business and no longer can you go to your farm, spend two hours back on the block chatting on a domino table, you will have enough time for that. So we want you to take agriculture serious. I am happy to hear of some of the, the efforts at diversifying in, um, Monjon. I want to encourage you to do that. Just today, there was a gentleman at my office, interested in shipping to Matnik and Barbados. Persons are coming to us, they are going to the packing houses and Mr Douglas will go into more details. We need a supply for persons to export, but it must not be a crazy way of farming. We must know in advance that you are going into production of this particular crops. We must know in advance that you are going into production of this particular crops so that we can really put a program in place and get the markets for you. And so, as we speak for you, the farmers here in Monjon who are diversifying into vegetables, we need all the cucumbers we can get. Tomorrow morning, I challenge you, my dear people of Monjon, call the backhouse and let the backhouse know that you're going into cucumbers. And they will work with you. They will help you stack your production. I heard of the, happy to hear of the the women's group into vegetables here. We would like the women to go into vegetables, not only for local consumption, but as a business for the export market. But you cannot do it alone. You just cannot do it alone. So for those of you who are small farmers, you can go to the aid bank and get between fifteen, one to fifteen thousand dollars to assist you. For those who are thinking of what we are talking about, the commercial farming, who has identified an exporter, a market for their produce, you can go to the aid bank. First of all, go to your extension office and let them give you some documents, a letter stating that you are a good farmer. Or put a small program together and go to the aid bank and you can receive between fifteen and thirty thousand dollars. And all you need is one guarantor for fifteen to thirty thousand dollars. And for you, the large commercial farmers out there, and I often say to the listeners that government is investing heavily in shipping. There's a facility where some half a million dollars was made available to assist boat owners to get more of our products out. And therefore, there will be an increase in demand for your produce. Right now, as we speak, there is a high demand for produce for export. And the buyers are... What we want is to produce enough so that when all of these buyers come around, there is adequate supply for all of them for the lucrative markets in the north. All of the islands north want Dominica's produce. And we have a... And in Matnik down south. There is a high interest in Trinidad. But there must be the supply for supply to Trinidad markets. So there is money to be made in agriculture. Farmers are making money in agriculture. I just passed Woodbridge Bayport in Rosso. And the vehicle are lining up with all of the cartoons. However, I was unhappy with what I saw. I find the cartoons are looking bulging. The cartoons are looking stressed out. I find that. So I'm sending a clear message to all exporters. They must not spoil their markets. They must use the facility that we have established to ensure that the cartoons have the weight required. If it's forty-one pongs the cartoon can hold, do not try to ram in fifty pongs. So all of the vehicles I saw today, the cartoons were looking overpacked. They were looking bulged out. So I'm sending a clear message to you, the exporters. Use the facility that government has established for you to ensure that your produce is cleaned, properly washed, weighed, and no overweight cartoon. I'm concerned about that. So there is a demand for our produce. But if we spoil the market like we did when we started exporting bananas, we will lose it again. So please, exporters, you have to help us. The investment is there. We have to meet the SPS measures, the requirement, the standard, to take produce to those markets. Especially... My exporters today, that yes, you are in a boom time. We will work hard in agriculture and we will give you quality produce. But you are responsible for taking quality produce to your markets. We cannot do that for you. And so I say to you, the farmers here in Monjon, here is a golden opportunity for you to make money in agriculture. Don't worry about all the noise you're hearing out there. People will talk. Do not forget, the very same people who are saying to you agriculture is dead, they are the ones coming to buy your produce to export for themselves. And that's okay. That's what we want. I want us to supply them with all what they need. But they speak on one side of their mouth and say agriculture is dead. And on the other side of their mouth, they say that's the only way they could make some money is in agriculture. So therefore, agriculture is alive. So I want you to go to the aid bank and engage yourselves with the aid bank. If you are facing challenges, come to us at the ministry. Because we are getting reports of some of the challenges that you, the farmers, are facing in accessing the funds. Our job is to ensure that you can access the funds. But even with that, well over a million dollars have already been disbursed to farmers who are qualified to receive these funds. So you too can receive your share. So I want you to be very positive, you, the farmers of Monjon. I want you to think positive. And I want you to know that times have changed, agriculture has changed. It's now a serious business. So if you are going into agriculture, it's not to plant four beds of cabbage anymore. If you're going into cabbage, you're going into serious cabbages. If you're going into cucumbers, you're going into serious cucumber. If you're going into dashing, you're going into serious dashing. But rest assured, you should not go into it without identifying your market, without knowing this is the person that you're going to be producing for. Dexia is ready to enter into contracts with all farmers who come. Secondly, my dear people, I want to share with you the whole question of the national abattoir. I want you to know, my people, that the abattoir is doing wonders in producing fresh chicken and pork for our island. I just had a discussion with the abattoir people today. And the abattoir, they've just purchased a freezer truck. And the intention is to get the pork and chicken into the supermarkets and large shops in the rural communities. As a matter of fact, there is already pork available in La Plaine as we speak. You can go to La Plaine on a Saturday afternoon or any day and buy your pork, fresh pork from the abattoir. The intention is to get the meat across the entire island so that persons in Cassebros and Monjon and La Plaine and Porte d'Orso can have the meat available to them in the same way you buy the foreign meat that you are not even show all it is. So when you go to your mini-mat in your communities, very soon, you'll be able to purchase your pork and your chicken from the abattoir. But I want you even now to start supporting the abattoir. The head butcher from the abattoir is from this office. He's from La Plaine. The head butcher is from this office. Your Par Rep mentioned the facility in Grandfond for rearing chicken for the abattoir, creating employment for the young men. They are well-trained in that. So we need to be able to ensure that there is a cycle of chicken in that facility regularly. But we have to increase our consumption so that we can increase our production. Okay? So support the abattoir chicken. When you go to town, look for the abattoir chicken in the refrigerators at the supermarkets. Because presently, we are, the food import bill for chicken and other meats is fourteen million dollars annually. So every year, we send out some fourteen million dollars for meat, imported meat. We have to put a dent into that. I want on as soon as we can. But the only way we will get there is if more of our people start buying product from the abattoir. There are a number of persons going into peak farming and they want to expand their farms. But the abattoir must be able to purchase more from them. But for the abattoir to do that, we, as Dominican consumers, must purchase more of the meat in the market. So the intention is to get it to work closer to you and we will take it from there. The other area that I want to touch on is the whole question of feeder roads. As you know that you in the southeast benefited highly from the banana accompanying measures, BAM feeder roads, EU feeder roads. There are three feeder roads being constructed in the southeast out of this program. And that is the Tiguanfond, Freal, and Boa Belvi feeder road here in the southeast. Now, when we do that investment for you, and let me tell you something, you people of Monjon and the southeast, Cassebros didn't get any of this feeder road. The Carina go community didn't get any of this feeder roads. We, Piri Savaan didn't get any of this feeder roads. But we are very happy that you, the people of the southeast are benefiting with three feeder roads on here. The intention is to ensure that you go back on the land and take farming serious. Let me just give you the cost of some of these feeder roads that we are doing. In Lot One, which is covering the Syllicate, Mero Cuba Salisbury, yes, Salisbury, it is costing the government seven point eight million dollars just to do these two feeder roads in Mero Cuba Salisbury and Syllicate. So when you hear them say nothing is happening for these farmers in this area, they do not know what they're talking about. Now, for Lot Two, which is the Millenrich feeder road, the Mango Water feeder road, the Mountain feeder road, and this is where your feeder road falls in, Tiguanfond, Freal, and Boa Belvi. Some four point four million dollars is being spent on these feeder roads. And for Lot Three, which is the Melvin Hall feeder roads, and after Tropical Storm Erika, we had to put some additional funds into the Melvin Hall feeder roads to do the Vauxhall Bridge for the Marigot farmers and so on. And for that area, that road, to include the Colliob feeder road, some ten point four million dollars. It means that for the Marigot feeder road alone, it's approximately almost seven million dollars being spent in the Marigot feeder road. And so, I'm saying all of this to let you know that government is investing heavily in feeder roads. Additionally, your Par Rep mentioned some of the feeder roads in Monjon that deserve attention. The government, the Prime Minister, has identified an additional ten million dollars to go towards feeder roads. So your feeder roads, my dear people here in Monjon, we are about to give it the fullest attention. After we've done this investment on these feeder roads, we expect you, the people, to adopt these feeder roads, to take care of these feeder roads, to keep the drains clear. You're driving up, there's a branch in the drain, just stop your vehicle and move it. There are coconuts in the drain, take the coconuts home and make us some coach. But do not let your feeder roads go into ruin. It's costing us too much money to maintain these feeder roads. So I am appealing to you, the people of Monjon, this is the best time to be in agriculture. It's the best time to go back in agriculture because the markets are continuing to open for more produce from Dominica. Of course, we've had all challenges. We've had all challenges in Black Sika Toka. We've had all challenges with the quality that we sent out. But we are saying now, all of the infrastructure is in place to ensure that when a product leave Dominica, it is the best quality, it's properly labeled, properly weighed, and it's heading out to some of the best markets out there. So this is my appeal to you tonight, the hardworking farmers of Monjon. I want to say to you, the young people, the young people of Monjon, the young people who are listening to me across the island, we are ready and willing to help you. We are ready and willing to give you the support that you need. Come up with your plans. Let us know what you are interested in. We will send you to the right officers within the ministry to work with you. Whether it's fishing, whether it's tree crop, whether it's coffee, whether it's cocoa, whatever you're interested in, the ministry is ready to help you to go into production, my dear people, not only for food security, because we are good at that, food security. We want to go into expanding the export market to meet the demands that we have for Dominica stuff. All of the islands, Virgin Islands and the islands up north, there are hundreds of people from Dominica who are residents there. The first place person they want to buy from is what is coming from Dominica. But we must meet the standard the market requires. We have competition. The Dominican Republic is now exporting into all our markets. But we can beat the competition in a manner that we have always done, by our quality, by our taste, the texture of our products. So let's maintain that. So when I come back to Monjon, I hope I will meet a strong farmers group. Because your Par Rep made an appeal for a strong farmers group in Monjon. And if you have a strong farmers group, you will get all the support that you need. We will invest in this farmers group. We will give you fertilizer for you to sell to your membership at a cheap rate, at a revolving structure so you can buy more fertilizer and keep your market going. If you have a strong farmers group, you can challenge the extension officers of La Plaine if you're not satisfied with the service they are giving to you. But if you're an individual, it's more difficult for you to get that attention. So in rounding up tonight, I just want to say to you that there is money to be made. But you must be a serious farmer to make that money. You must see yourself as an investor like everybody else. But your investment is on your farm. Your investment is in your dashing. Your investment is by diversifying your farm to ensure that you have tannins and you have cucumbers and you have yams and you have dashing. So whenever the season comes in, you have something to sell. Your investment is to ensure that you take care of your tree crops, your avocados, your avocados, so that your avocados will yield good crop for you. We want you to go into cocoa, because there's a huge market for Dominica cocoa. But you must be a serious farmer who is not distracted by the noise out there and who intends to make a living out of agriculture. Thank you very much, my dear people. God bless you.
Thank you, Honorable Drago. And let us give Honorable Drago another round of applause, please. I'm not hearing anybody on the outside? Alright, I just want to just call on the large numbers of persons on the outside who have been here for this meeting. Could you kindly lower your voices? Because we have some more seats in there. And this meeting tonight is really aimed to inform you, to educate you, and to challenge you to participate and ask questions, concerns, address the concerns, the issues that we have in this community. So I'd appreciate if you could lower our voices and really let's participate as much as possible so we can have a very positive meeting. I want to say, Honorable Drago, you have really done your best this evening to inform our residents as to what is taking place in agriculture. I want to say to you, my people of Monjon, and the other surrounding villages, and even listeners on DBS and Kyri, that really, in truth and fact, the government of Dominica through the Ministry of Agriculture is doing its best towards the development of agriculture. It is left now to us farmers, it is left to you, the farmers of Monjon, to really pay heed for the call of diversifying so that we can see the continued improvement of our village and most of all, our communities. At this time, I would like to call on our next speaker, who is the Honorable Dr. Kenneth Daru, the parliamentary representative for Pirisavon and also the Minister for Health and the Environment. Could you please give him a big applause as we welcome him? And let me again invite some of you on the outside. We have some more space inside. And could you kindly give Dr. Daru a listening ear?
Thank you very much, Honorable Ivor Stevenson. Let me also, well, let me recognise, of course, in his capacity as a Member of Parliament for the area. Again, Honorable Ivor Stevenson and his beautiful wife, Mrs. Stevenson, in the audience. My other Cabinet colleagues, to my right, the dynamic Ian Douglas, Minister for Trade, Employment and Energy, and also Member of Parliament for the Portsmouth constituency. And to my immediate left, Honorable Johnson Drago, Minister for Agriculture and Forestry and Fisheries, who gets more dynamic every time I hear him speak. Job well done, sir. Let me also recognise my other Cabinet colleague in the audience, Honorable Justin A. Charles, my neighbouring constituency, well, Member of Parliament for my neighbouring constituency, and also Minister for Youth, Culture and many other things. And Minister for Kalinago Fields, my cousin, Casillas Daru. I also recognise several other people in the audience. I saw Ian Monroe earlier, and of course, my good friend who always accompanied me all around the island recently, although he's attached to the Ministry of Agriculture, special advisor in the Ministry of Agriculture, Nicole Shanks-Esprie. I also see a constituent of mine in the background. I'm not sure in what capacity he's here, but I know, it's special. Yes, I know, thank you. A good friend, Oster, who's always faithful companion to Honorable Drago, and all the wonderful people of the Monjon River City and Grandfaire area. And though elections have not been called, people, in case you're wondering, why is it that this Labour Party administration and the Cabinet, we go in all around Dominica? And I'm not sure if the Honourable Prime Minister whispered to Ian or any of my colleagues that election has been announced. As far as I know, elections are not constitutionally due until 2019, if I recall correctly. But your Labour Party administration, your government has seen it fit to have a series of town hall meetings around the country. And I think this is the third that your Member of Parliament has been conducting in this constituency, and I think you need to be commended for that. And of course, I want to thank him for inviting me here this evening. And although as a number of people before would have said, and I think he alluded to that, that it's been a hectic month, really packed month of activities, town hall meetings all across the country. Of course, a number of events, meetings today, and Cabinet tomorrow. But when Honorable Stevenson asked me to join him, him as my level-headed deputy in the Ministry of Health and the Environment. Yours truly, as a minister, can be a little erratic and spontaneous sometimes, and he's the voice of reason, my faithful deputy, I like to refer to him. Number two, we also started this journey together, both of us as workers in the health sector. Himself as a very long-time, hard-working, experienced environmental health officer, myself as a district medical officer. And we both left our public service jobs to join the fight, okay, to represent the people of Dominica. So we started this thing together, so I felt I also owe it to him. And number three, also to share my few thoughts if you, as it pertains to my stewardship as the Minister for Health and the Environment. But before I go into my stewardship, to spend a few minutes with you, I don't plan on speaking long tonight, well, I always say that, but I end up going on and on. I really want to commend the par rep for his hard work. And although Honorable Stevenson appears to be a quiet, soft-spoken and sometimes unassuming individual, and you heard him, there's no denying the development that he has brought to the Grandfaire constituency in his seven years as Member of Parliament. And you can think what you want about him, but you must applaud his efforts. And while he's not as loud as myself and other, like my partner, Shanks-Esprie, and a lot of us, he's not as loud and voiceless, okay, but he speaks when he has to speak. And I want to assure you that, Honorable Ivor Stevenson, he gets the extra energy and the extra voice when he has to represent you at Parliament and at the Cabinet level. And in fact, driving up to Monjon and passing through the Odellis and the rest of the areas here, we see work would have begun quite a few months ago. And of course, your concern for the slow pace of works. I want to tell you that every week at the Cabinet level, Honorable Ivor Stevenson would come to Cabinet and lament the slow pace of works. So the fact that works would have taken a bit of time to get off the ground, and even the slow pace of works, is not a true picture of his representation. Because he comes to Cabinet on a weekly basis, making noise for his people. Please, we need to see improvement in the road structure, and I think you need to be commended for this. So I want to thank him for inviting me to Monjon. That's not my first time here. In fact, as I said, we started this journey together. And every opportunity that we get, I remember this crew, myself, Honorable Drago and Honorable Kelver and Honorable Peter Saint-Jean. We always stick together in this zone, Honorable Justin A. Charles, and try to support each other as much as we can. And this is what we represent, people, in the Dominican Party, a family, very close, supportive of one another and in solidarity with one another. I said that I'm going to spend a few minutes to speak on my stewardship as the Minister of Health. And of course, one of the things that will come to each and every one of your mind is our flagship project, the New National Hospital. A $40 million gift from the People's Republic of China. And I notice you're not clapping, you didn't hear me. A $40 million gift from the People's Republic of China. And I want you to start taking notes as we go along as to the gifts and grants that we have been receiving. And I'm just talking, I'm talking just to the Ministry of Health. And I'll tell you why this is important. So $40 million multiplied by the ongoing rate of 2.7169, when I recall, equivalent to $108 million EC dollars. A state-of-the-art hospital. And those of us, I'm sure a lot of you go to town quite often. In case you haven't, you need to take a visit to the Princess Margaret Hospital to see the progress that is being made on the construction of a new national hospital. And I want to tell you why it's important that I spend a few minutes speaking to this hospital. Because you would have heard, of course, from one of the most vocal ones on the other side and from this very same area, they would have spoken to this hospital being an election gimmick and hospitals in the sky, etc. And this hospital was just to fool the Dominican populace. But I can tell you as the Minister of Health, and you would have heard me, those of you, and I'm sure a lot of you follow the radio station and the programmes, on numerous occasions speak to why we took so long in getting this hospital started. In fact, there was a time when I think even our Chinese counterparts, our Chinese friends were getting a little impatient with us. But we need to recognise, first of all, that building a hospital on an existing site, on an active hospital site, was going to pose its challenges, was going to pose many challenges to us. And we had to make sure that we had everything in place before we started construction. So we were a little still getting off the ground, but we finally started. And our Chinese friends would have told us that they need 30 months, two and a half years, to construct this state-of-the-art hospital. 30 months, two and a half years. And those of us who know the diligence and the discipline of our Chinese friends will know that by the end of the 29 months, as I always say, 28 days, this hospital will be ready for use. And of course, I'd like to explain, even if I've done it 10 times before, why we choose the current site and why it would have been easier to move to a new site. I think it's important in educating the people. And I'd like to say that no matter how small the community we go to, we think that each and every community, each and every body is important to share this very same information that we share with all around the island, no matter how large or no matter how small the community. And we decided to remain at the existing site for a number of reasons. So while the government's inclination was to have moved to a new site, of course, it would have made things much easier for us. We decided to build on the new site based on the advice given to us by the experts, people from Pahu and WHO, etc., by people who are supposed to know more about these things than the average me, Ian and Johnson Drago, etc. And they advised us that because of access and the population spread, etc., that we should build on the current PMH site. And they assured us that it had been done many times before, and with the proper management, it could be done. And thank God, and I want to say thank God, because there's a God above, sorry, who loves this Dominican Labour Party administration. And so far, God has been very good to us in blessing us. Because a lot of the concerns that before that we were going to have in constructing a hospital on an existing site, a lot of these concerns and nuances have been kept to a minimum. So we want to thank the Almighty God, Yahweh Jehovah, whatever you refer to him, we want to thank him for this. And we have no reason to believe that the rest of the project wouldn't go as smoothly. Of course, as construction intensifies, okay, we will expect some of these nuances. But we are optimistic, as I said, and we are praying and God-fearing administration. And we have no fear that the rest of the construction will continue as smoothly. So this hospital is going to be built in seven phases. Of course, as I said, the challenge of building on a current site means that we now have to build in phases, where we have to provide temporary structures for whatever it is that we go in to demolish, move the services into the temporary structure, demolish the existing structure, build a permanent structure, and move back into it before we move on to our next phase. So Phase 1, and you really need to visit, even you need to visit the construction site when you visit the PMH next time. Of course, you won't be allowed to enter the active construction site, but you can always peek through the galvanized fencing to see what's going on. And you would see an advanced stage of two buildings. One will be what they call the casualty department, but in proper terms, accident and emergency department. State-of-the-art, complete with two theatres. So the accident and emergency department is going to have its own two theatres ready to do emergency surgeries. And the other two, the other building, is going to house what they call the radiology, meaning the MRI, CT scan, and also they call the phlebotomy area, that's area to do your blood works, etc. So come August, September this year, these first two buildings are going to be ready and commissioned for use. So while as the Minister of Health, and I'm sure many of us had our concerns as to building on the existing site, in retrospect, I'm thinking about it carefully, and I want you to really think about it carefully. It means therefore, that by the end of the 30 months, we are guaranteed a fully functioning hospital. Because we have to ensure that each area is commissioned and functional before moving on to the next phase. So unlike probably if we had moved to a new site and where we build a new structure and probably have to wait for a month or sometimes even years doing little things here, there and there before we get it fully functional, one of the advantages, as I said, in retrospect and in hindsight is that we will have a fully functional hospital at the end of the 30 months. And just today, people, and I mean, you don't have to take it from me, just today, those of us who listened to the launching of the National Health Insurance Pilot Programme would have heard the expert from Pahu say that he would have reviewed the floor plans of the hospital, and he was very impressed in the quality of the hospital that we are going to get. I mean, let's face it, people, $108 million is a lot of money, okay? So we are guaranteed that the People's Republic of China, they're going to be proud of it, and it's also going to be the pride and joy of the eastern Caribbean. So we are moving ahead of the hospital. So apart from the new building, as I said, which will be ready in 30 months' time, the project also comes complete with state-of-the-art equipment, namely, an MRI, and a lot of us would know what an MRI, even if we don't know what it means, I can tell you what it means, magnetic resonance imaging, that's just a big fancy word to mean one of those nice pieces of equipment that sometimes doctors send us to Antigua, Barbados, Martinique to do. In other words, it's much more specialised than a CT scan. So the project comes with one of these. It also comes with, I'm talking of, of course, the more advanced equipment. It also comes with what they call a high laser ultrasound that we're going to use for treating cancers and tumors right here on island. So when this hospital is completed, the new equipment, we are going to see very little need for travelling overseas. And we all know, of course, the cost that what it costs us rather to travel overseas for medical treatment. So we're not saying that people wouldn't have to go overseas anymore. What we're saying is that we should see less and less people coming to us to travel overseas for some of these services. Because not only will it come with all of this new state-of-the-art equipment, and I said before, that apart from what the project comes with, I would have also given directives to the Ministry of Health to also come up with a list of equipment that would be befitting of a new national hospital in the year 2020. So whatever it is the project does not come with that we're going to need at the hospital, the government of Dominica will procure this to retrofit the new national hospital. So in addition to the new structure, and my friend Ian likes to say the spanking new structure, we also, and the new equipment, we are also doing this in a very systematic way. We would also have training overseas, a number of exciting and new specialties. Some of them would have already returned, some of them would be in the process of their first, second year. And we are about to introduce some new doctors into various disciplines, that they call specialised disciplines, such as geriatrics, which is to do with senior citizens, nephrology, the kidneys, and urology, intensive care, emergency medicine, oncology, cancer, amongst many others. So as we speak, we have a full cadre of 12 to 15 young doctors, Dominican doctors who speak both English and Pasqua, will have been trained or have been trained to complement the new national hospital. So as I said, no longer will you have to be referred overseas just to see a specialist that is not available here. So your new hospital, your new structure, new equipment and new services will be available here. But we have to understand, people, that all of these things cost money. We have to find money, of course, to pay these new consultants. And these days, their going rates are not easy. And of course, we are the union, of course, still making noise for more money for them. And of course, it's your right to ask for more money. The hospital itself, maintenance of the hospital utilities is going to be on a rise, or increase rather. And we are also going to be needing lots of money to service, maintain and replace this new equipment, okay, when they get old. Now, we know that healthcare is very expensive, and we all have been to the doctor, and even sometimes when we access the primary healthcare services, which is free, sometimes they refer us to the pharmacies to buy medication that's not available at the, what they call the dispensary, some of the older ones, at the health centre. And we know the rising cost of medicine, and even certain tests that we have to do. Some of these tests not available at the government labs, so we have to go to Laffalès, lots and lots of money. You have to pay to visit the doctor, you have to pay when you come back to send it for the test, you have to come back to drop the test, you have to pay again for him to interpret the test for you, etc. So we know that, we know about the rising cost in healthcare, and healthcare is very expensive. And we want, and I wanted to, if there's one thing I wanted to leave here tonight from my long journal speech, is we want this new facility, this new equipment and these new services to be affordable and accessible to all and sundry. In other words, in other words, people, there's very little point. That would be a futile effort if we have this multimillion-dollar building, this multimillion-dollar equipment, and all this state-of-the-art modern equipment, and all of these doctors, and we have specialist doctors falling over one another at hospital, if the average person from Monjon cannot access these health facilities and these health services. And knowing this administration, this Labour Party government, and what we stand for, in fact, we've been accused of creating what they call a mendicant society. But we make no apologies for helping the less fortunate people. So we have to ensure that these facilities, these services, as I said, that each and everybody, ranging from big voucher ministers like my partner Ian Douglas, I can call Ian if he's my partner, okay, down to the last rural person, okay, each and everybody has equal access to these services. Because we understand that not everybody can afford this health insurance that you have to pay $500, $600 a month for. So you're asking me, but why are you talking about Dr. Daru? How is this going to, how are we going to achieve this? So here comes the much talked about national health insurance, which by the way, we'll launch what they call a pilot programme today, those of you who are listening to DBS Radio and Kyri FM, I think. Now, what this national health insurance policy is all about? Over the years, we've heard lots of government talk and talk. In fact, just today, I was speaking to Honorable Julius Timofey, and he wasn't speaking in his capacity as a former minister of health. He was speaking in his capacity as a former minister of finance under the, in the UWP administration. So we're talking about way back in 1995, what they're about, over 20 years ago. He recalled surveys and consultants, consultant history and all of these things that would have been done as it pertains to universal health coverage. And up till now, well, until now rather, nothing had been done about this national health insurance. So people and government have spoke about it, and people have come, white men with jackets, and ties, everybody come to Dominica to tell us what needed to be done. But it had to take this Labour Party administration and our love for people, more importantly. Our love for people, our love for the less fortunate, our love for the marginalised people of society. Because, as I said, among us, we love the few people who can always afford the conventional health insurance policies. But we have to understand the majority of Dominicans do not have the luxury of an extra $300 or $400 to afford a health insurance for the private insurance companies. That's just the hard facts of the matter. And this is what the other side lack, okay? They do not interact with people in an honest basis to get their hard facts so they can make a necessary, they can make the necessary policy decision. So this is why you had them talking. So this is why you hear them talking about how we're spoiling people and how we, we giving away. But as I said, we make no apologies for this. And speaking of no apologies, this 5 million dollars that would have been committed to capitalizing the national health insurance in the first instance, comes from, these are proceeds that come from the Citizenship by Investment Programme, the much talked about CBI. And I'm sure, um, Honorable Ian Douglas will talk, he had become the CBI expert, so I believe that for him to explain in his presentation. But this very same CBI that you hear them talking about, that we are not using the CBI in a sustainable way. This is where the proceeds are coming from, to capitalize this fund in the first instance. So what we're doing, recognizing that it would be almost impossible to have what they call universal health coverage or national health insurance policy to cover everybody in the first instance, we are utilizing the framework and institutional framework of the Dominical Social Security to launch what they call a pilot programme. Meaning, we are going to target single mothers in the first instance with children three years and under. This is a very vulnerable group that studies have shown, so we're going to start with them. And of course, the plan is that, not assuming, I'm very optimistic that everything is going to work fine. Because the Dominical Social Security would have the experience, the personnel and the expertise in place to handle, because of course, they've been doing this for quite a number of times now, for quite a long time now rather. So we are confident that this pilot project is going to go well. So incrementally, we are going to go adding all the vulnerable groups. Maybe single fathers like myself will be the next vulnerable, vulnerable group that will be added in next few months. So as, I hope, I hope my better half is not listening, yeah. But, um, but incrementally, we'll go about adding, adding other vulnerable groups, probably senior citizens, et cetera, et cetera, until eventually, each and everybody in Dominica is covered under this pilot programme. And I think this is worthy of a round of applause, because it means that, it means that no longer will you have to be doing radio phones or even, or even making several trips to town, sometimes to try to see the, um, your, your member of parliament or even sometimes Honorable Prime Minister. And I really want to commend the, what they call the, the public support programme, what it, what it's in, the, the famous Red Clinic. And again, we make no apologies for this Red Clinic or public support programme. Because, and I'll tell you why, because many times, and I'm pretty sure probably over three quarter of the proceeds or the, or the budgeted funds for this public support programme would have gone towards assisting people who would have had life-threatening diseases, who if they did not find the money, probably within a 24-hour span, these people would have perished. And I'm thankful that the public support programme, the Red Clinic, exists as a medical doctor first of all, and as a minister that it exists, that we have been able to help our citizens until the start of this national health insurance programme. So when you hear them talking bad, like as if we're supposed to hang our head in shame when they call it Red Clinic and all of this, again, telling that we make no apologies for this, because we have living testimonies. We have living testimonies of people who would have exceeded, who would have needed these funds. And we thank God that there was such a facility in place to, to help them when they most needed it. Because while most of us may be sitting here, maybe would have maybe a steady income, most of us comfortable jobs, there's no telling where we might end up tomorrow. There's no telling where we might end up tomorrow, because we've been, life is so funny, we've been maybe, maybe just an accident. Okay, and we find ourselves, our little, maybe a few thousand dollars that we have on our bankbook just disappear overnight. And there will come a time when each and every one of us will find ourselves, we were back, we were back against the wall and we will need someone to turn to. And we thank God, as I said, that this, that this administration, we have been very human, we have, we have had a very humanitarian approach to governance and we make no apologies for this. So, again, as I said, um, you don't have to, you don't have to take it from me. You would have heard the Pahu expert at the launching of the national insurance praise the government on its efforts. Praise the government on the national hospital, praise us again on this pilot insurance programme. Because as I said, many governments over the past have spoken about it and not just, not just in Dominica, the sub-region, Carricom, all over the world, we would, the governments talking about it, but no one had had the guts until now to make a move in the right direction. And we want to thank the Minister and Ministry of Finance, as I said, for making this bold move towards, um, towards us improving the health services of our people, especially the, the less fortunate. I can speak to the new Marigot Hospital, yes, a new hospital in Marigot, which has been on the cards for a couple of years now. And in fact, our last manifesto, probably our last two manifestos would have spoken to the construction of a new hospital in Marigot. So even if so, while you hear the Member of Parliament for, for Marigot, as I said, sometimes jumping all over the place and every time he realizes that he has become non-relevant, he of course picks up some topic and most times it will be the new Marigot Hospital. We, we would have had budgeted for the past two financial years' monies at 1.5 million dollars to begin the designs of the Marigot Hospital and also to improve the primary healthcare facilities. However, we have been a bit slow, of course, in getting off the ground for a number of reasons and I've explained this lots of times before. Even when, when I felt that the ministry really moved a bit slow, I, I was man enough to go on the, to go on the media and say, yes, I admit that we moved a bit slow. But there were a number of reasons. We would have had the new national hospital, which would have occupied a lot of our time in getting, doing the finishing touches. Um, Tropical Coast America also happened and we cannot deny that Tropical Coast America happened and also put us back a lot of things, we had to reprioritize at that time. Also, we also, um, were very slow in receiving the necessary technical expertise from the other line ministries, which is why the cabinet colleagues have been very good towards the Ministry of Health. And we know of our very own unit in place, a project officer, our architect or engineer to assist us in implementing a number of the capital projects that we have within the Ministry of Health. And I really want to thank them for their support. So we are moving swiftly ahead the plans for the new Marigot Hospital. And again, God is a good God who loves the Dominical Labour Party. And I'll tell you why. Just a week or so ago, we would have heard the Mexican government, the ambassador of Mexico to the Commonwealth of Dominica announced Mexico's commitment of 5 million US dollars, equivalent to 13 million EC dollars towards the construction of the Marigot Hospital. So that is the second thing I'm mentioning that I ask you to take note of, okay? Because you would have heard a lot of, of, of the, um, of the members of the opposition talking, trying to make it appear that we are government that nobody wants to deal with and the World Bank and all of these institutions, that they're shunning us, they're snubbing us. But here we have the government of Mexico committing an additional 13 million US dollars towards the construction of the Marigot Hospital. And, and we are the Ministry of Health and Environment, we are in advanced stage in planning the designs, et cetera. Very, very soon, we have almost completed the concept, what they call a concept brief. And pretty soon, this concept brief will go to the design, to design firms for tendering so we can begin work as early as possible on the new Marigot Hospital. Because we recognize in spite of whatever that's being said out there, the strategic and the importance of having, sorry, a, a hospital at Marigot, given its location close to the Douglas Charles Airport and also, of course, a hub in the northeast. We are also, plans are also moving ahead of the construction of a number of new health centres in this financial and calendar year at Vicas and at, um, Can Caliho. And also Bellevue Chope, um, my good friend from Bellevue Chope. Because whilst it has not been included as part of the budgetary estimates, we recognize that with the advent of the Pilit Savan residents in the Bellevue Chope area, the current structure is far from adequate in housing, in, in housing the health centre. So this is something that we have asked the, as the Ministry of Health to give urgent attention in terms of, first of all, advising on the suitability of the current site, if not suitable site, so we can proceed at full speed with a new health centre in Bellevue Chope. And also, of course, restoring the health services at Newtown. We would have also, um, had or have sorry on this year's financial estimates, a sum of over 5 million dollars given to us by Pahu. Again, another regional institution, we have entrusted us with 5 million dollars. And I, and I'll tell you why this is important to you, the people of because the first health centre that's going to be what they call smarted or smart stream is going to be the Lapland Health Centre, which is a type 3 health centre of which Monjon part, form part of. And what do you mean by smart in the health centre? Because we realize that especially after adverse weather events, that the health service needs to continue. Okay, and too often times that the health centre sometimes would be the first place to suffer either for lack of water or, or lack of electricity, et cetera. And a lot of times, especially in cases of where we have, um, what they call multiple trauma and people getting hurt or people dying, we need your health centre to continue function. In other words, the health centre shouldn't be closed because of no water or no light. So what we are about to do, we have identified three health centres in the first instance. Of course, we will do this until all health facilities around the island are retrofitted, that they are going to be, they're, they're going to be retrofitted in such a way that they're going to be depending on what they call, um, solar energy and of course, to have their own water supply, that in the event of any natural disaster, that they continue to provide service to the people. And Lapland has been identified as a first health, first health centre for this project and work should start in the next few weeks. And also, the other two health centres would be Grande and Marigot. Yes, Marigot is also one of the health centres identified for this retrofitting. So just to round up quickly, because I know my, my friend, um, Honorable Ian Douglas, um, usually has a lot to say. And we want to, um, and he, and I'm not sure how familiar he is with this, this part of the country. So we want the people of Monjon to hear, to hear and see a lot of him tonight. Um, just to round up with two other programmes within the Ministry of Health that we also, I'm sure, the people of the Monjon community can identify with. The programme today with the screening of schoolchildren, I can securely program that one. I'm sure the Monjon primary school students would have been screened. And we would have identified that a lot of times that our kids sometimes don't do well at school and it's not because they're not as smart as the other child. Sometimes too late, we realize that it's because of visionary problems, that they couldn't see the board, that they would not see the board properly. So what we have been doing and I'm sure have been advised by the Ministry of Health, that we've done over 95% of the screening. We are going through all the primary schools, screening the children and those requiring glasses, spectacles will be given glasses free of charge by the government of Dominica. Because we want to make sure that our kids, we want to make sure that our kids have the best start in life. Also, I'm sure another programme that you can identify, what we like to call the Misión Milagro, that is a Spanish for they call a miracle mission. Where we had the first phase of this mission being done in Cuba, where a number of our citizens were flown to Cuba for surgery, namely cataracts and teridiums. We now have our Venezuelan counterparts who have come to help us and we would have had the first stage of this programme done. We are, and a number of you especially, they were senior citizens, would have been identified for surgery. So as we speak, the Venezuelan surgical team is preparing to come down so we can begin the actual surgical interventions at the Princess Margaret Hospital. Again, all in the area of the environment quickly, we would also know that we have what they call a, a US 38 million dollar project or within the Ministry of Health Environment, um, named the DVR, DVRP. And then I, 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 why it's important to this part of the country? Because one of the rules, or one of the lots identified for intervention under this programme would be the Pocasetu Buarde area. A project set to cost 12 point something million dollars would have been identified for interventions. And these interventions would include stabilization of the cliff, culvert replacement. Because we realize that, and especially in after the passage of Tropical Coast America, that a lot of these waterways, they are tired. And we of course, so, of course, saw what happened in the Pocasetu area, where unfortunately, two young men of this area lost their lives. So we realized that a lot of these waterways are now inadequate to carry the volume of water that are coming in from these adverse weather events. So we are going to replace a lot of these culverts, a lot of surface dressings, slope stabilization, et cetera, equivalent to over 12 million US dollars. One of the other issue that I want to also address before leaving is the issue of solid waste. And I'm pretty sure that also this part of the country would not have been spared sometimes the unsightly, um, the unsightly, um, what will I put it? Or rather the, or rather the, the, um, the ISO of having your garbage not collected on a timely manner. Just to let you know that we are in intense discussion with the Ministry of Finance, because the Dominical Solid Waste Corporation, as we speak, they are experiencing some serious difficulties. So we're in the process of having discussion in Ministry of Finance to see how we can get the Dominical Solid Waste Corporation back on its feet and to have a more regular collection. But that being said, this shouldn't take away the responsibility of each and every one of us to manage our waste properly. Okay, because, because a lot of this stuff, a lot of the garbage that goes to the landfill or be, or placed by the roadside for collection, a lot of this can be managed in backyard compost pits, et cetera. In other words, stuff that are biodegradable, that can, that can rot, that can be compost, should not be put by the road for dogs and cats and stuff to be, okay, to, to make a mess of. So we, we have plans, we have some exciting plans for the Dominical Solid Waste Corporation. And in the coming weeks and so, we should see an improvement in the collection of, of, of garbage around the island. Um, it would also be remiss of me also not to touch on, on some of the things that the parrot mentioned and some of the wonderful things that he has been doing and we plan on doing. And post-Tropical Coast America, which left us a debt of 1.4 billion dollars, we not be, we have been able to do a lot of the wonderful things for you, the people of the Monjon area and the wider Dominica community because of proceeds of the CBI. And again, as I said, Honorable Douglas, we respect the CBI. But just to let you know that the CBI is a legitimate bona fide programme, where somebody requiring a second citizenship will put in or invest their monies either into a government programme or into a project. In the case of the projects, we have a number of projects, hotel projects around the island. In the north, we have the Kapinski Hotel. We also have the Jungle Day Resort, which unfortunately was destroyed by Tropical Coast America and a great loss to the people of this area. I know some of the people in, in the southeast who employed at Jungle Bee. And also, more importantly to me as a Member of Parliament for Pilit Savan, the resettlement of the Pilit Savan community, which is set to cost over 100 million dollars, is going to depend on the success and continuation of the CBI programme. So when we have people, when you have people who claim to love people and love country and want people to vote them into office, seeking and sometimes even rejoicing when they think in their mind that the CBI programme is destroyed, they need to understand that the destruction of the CBI is directly linked to the destruction of lives of a number of our people. And I tell the Pilit Savan people, as it is, that if the CBI programme does not continue and does not continue as successfully as it has been, that they will have, we have no choice but to let them, what we say in part that they bury themselves. And I mean, this is just the hard facts of the matter. And all of these programmes that the parrot talking about, the washroom programme, the community roads, and we have said that we are going to eliminate all pit latching in Dominica by the end of 2017 and to rehabilitate all community roads by the end of 2017. All of these wonderful ambitious projects, all of these things are going to stop if our CBI programme does not, does not continue. And don't let them fool you, the people of Monjon. I know, I know that you have a very, um, active opposition here in this part of the country, but you need to open your minds and listen to both sides of the story. And you need to find out and, and if you, if you don't understand certain things, ask people you think that understand better than you and ask them, what is the CBI all about? Because this is a programme that a lot of other countries engage in, even the great America, we like to talk about it, have what they call a Citizenship by Investment Programme, they give it a fancy name, EB5, where if you invest half a million, 500,000 American dollars, they expedite, they fast-track your permanent residence file or status. So we need to educate ourselves and inform ourselves and stop making the opposition make you feel that all of us as ministers, that we have passport in our briefcase or in our pocket or in our glove compartment of our pickup and go around selling passports. This is not so. As we speak, the only authorized department or body in Dominica responsible for issuing, printing and issuing passports remain the Commonwealth of Dominica Police Force Immigration Department and, and they have to go through a due process. Of course, like everything else, and you don't have to believe us, as I said, you can listen to people out of Dominica. Just recently, the US Ambassador Dominica, very, I understand her career, um, public servant, very, um, level-headed lady, she gave her candid, a very candid opinion about our Citizenship by Investment Programme, where she spoke of, yes, there are little things that we have to worry about, yes, there are little things that we have to fine-tune. But she said that America has no interest at all in Dominica and its CBI programme. So while you hear the opposition ranting and raving about some of us ministers cannot travel to America, the Prime Minister and visas revoked, blah, 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 et cetera. Okay, here comes the ambassador and she said that all she's asking the countries involved in this programme is to ensure that they tighten up on some of the due diligence. And of course, this is reasonable, because we understand that sometimes people sometimes stick for the cracks of these programmes. But like everything else, no system is perfect, people, no system is perfect. And I tell people, you can look at the great Americas as another example. America's a very robust system. I mean, when you go for, for, um, what do you call it, um, green card or whatever visa, I mean, they ask you all sorts of questions. And even before you come to them, they would have used all sorts of means about you anyways. So that makes sense that you go there and lie to them, because they would know everything about you anyways. I don't, I don't know where they have satellites or where they have cameras hidden all, all over the world about you. But they would know a lot about you. And even then, those of us who listen to some of these terrorist acts on home soil, some of us, some of us who see, who listen to, watch the TV rather and see some of these terrorist acts on home soil in America would realize that some of these acts would have been committed by immigrants, people who would have come through the system. But what happened, when they came through the system, they were clean people and they had nothing on them. But by the time they got into America, okay, and they, and they got their green card or whatever, then they whatever, then they went ahead and committed acts. I like to use, I like to use an example which is easy to understand. Each and every minister would have a diplomatic passport. Why? Because we are supposed to be honorable, God fearing, loving citizens. Now let's put on a way down now to, to, to Roseau, Dr. Drygo, and I decide to stop at, I see my friend, John Zidder, Dr. Tousen Farm, and still two of his pigs. Are you going to blame the government for giving us a diplomatic passport? No, because this act was done after we were issued the diplomatic passport. So we need to be careful and educate ourselves when you hear people trying to come and talk their nonsense, what I like to say in fact, but they are betis, we have to educate ourselves and be able to answer them in an educated and responsible manner. So I just want to tell you, the wonderful people of Monjon, Rivestiric, to continue to support your Parrep, to continue to stand by your Member of Parliament, a very hardworking, soft-spoken, quiet, timid, but very hardworking Member of Parliament. And then you need to also continue to support your Labour Party administration. Because as we speak, as we speak, this is the only alternative you have. Okay, who's going to make things happen for you in the Southeast and for the rest of the wonderful people of Dominica? And, and I'm sure by now you can tell who has your interest, who has your best interest at heart. And in fact, just today, it was so obvious that at the launching of such an important program, the National Health Insurance Program, all Members of Parliament were invited, including the opposition, the parliamentary opposition, and not one of them showed up. Not one of them showed up at this important initiative today. And this is significant. You have to ask them, why? Because it's a positive nation building event, you will not find them here. Okay, however, you will find them, of course, engaged in other destructive acts and trying to pollute the minds of you, the wonderful people of Dominica. So we need to educate ourselves, as I said, and be ready to answer them, especially when election time comes around and they come asking for your vote. You need to know who really cares for you. And of course, the record, our record have shown that this is the administration who has shown caring for its people, none other than the Dominica Labour Party. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Daru. And let us give Dr. Daru a bigger round of applause. That's better, my people of Monjon, Grand Four, Rivestiric and all other visiting friends. I, I want at this time to once again acknowledge the Southeast East team of Parreps who continue to represent you, the people of the Southeast. And I want to recognize, let's go way down to Grande, Honorable Justin Charles. I want to again acknowledge again our Honorable Kenneth Daru, Pilit Savan constituency. I know that Honorable Peter is listening, but unfortunately, he could not have been here this evening, he is out of state. I know, had he been in the state, he would have been talking here and informing us and educating us on the issues of development of education in this country. I can tell you, well, we have also the Honorable Drygo, who again has been making the sacrifices to ensure we see the continued improvement of agriculture in this country. And I'm not going to forget my honorable colleague again from the Carib Territory, Honorable Casillas Daru, who again, all of us from the Southeast Zone, we are here in large numbers to support you, the people of the Southeast, to support you, the people of Monjon, Rivestiric and Grand Four. But I think we're running up towards the last speaker. But let me just make mention of a few things which may have not been mentioned in my, my contribution. Although Dr. Daru did make mention slightly of one area. And we are looking at, for example, the roads from Pocasay back into Delices. We have two major funding partners on the programs to do the DVRP and the B envelope. And Dr. Daru made mention of the fact that we are going to see the development of sections of our road from Pocasay to Tarishpit, which will be funded under the DVRP program. And I can assure you, my dear people, I know that we have been patient, but I can tell you, come next year, by this time, you will have begun to see the continued improvement of our roads from Pocasay to Tarishpit and we'll be driving much more comfortably. I can also assure you that you continue to see development between Tarishpit and even up to the foot of Mon Hodelis. I mean, we have been patient, we have been driving on these roads, we have been accessing areas that are very critical and challenging, but with your continued patience as residents, I know that one day, and not that long day, but very soon, we are going to see much improvements to accessing our areas, particularly areas in the Southeast. So I want to just make mention of these two areas of development in our roads, infrastructure, and we will see that happening, as it continues to happen. We will be much happier as people of the Southeast. And before I introduce our next speaker, I just want to call again you residents out here, especially some of the voices that are a little too loud. This meeting is meant to inform us, to educate us, not to divide us, not to cause division or distorted minds. It is meant first of all to listen to one side. And I just want to assure you, the few not persons who are making a little noise, don't give Monjon that kind of representation because we are live right there in Monjon on DBS and Carri FM. And we have our listeners out there who are listening to us because they know that good things have come to Monjon. And it's the first time Monjon is having such a town hall meeting which is live and gives persons not only Monjon, but other residents in this country an opportunity to know what is taking place as far as development is concerned in Monjon, Rivestiric, Grand Four, and to a bigger extent on a national basis. At this time, let me introduce a very senior politician, a stalwart politician, one whose family has a history of politics. His father was a politician, his uncle was a politician, and may their soul rest in peace. But I, just before I pass over the microphone to him, to you, the people of Monjon and other friends of Monjon, let me at this time take this opportunity to express our sincerest condolences to the Martin family. We know that we lost Teacher Martin. She may her soul rest in peace. But I just wanted to mention that because of the fact that we know the sterling contribution that Teacher Martin made towards, towards the development of education in Monjon. So we extend our condolences to the entire family and may her soul rest in peace. To you, Honorable Douglas, you have made serious time to be in Monjon. And when I was looking at my list of speakers, I was saying to myself, I really wish Honorable Douglas would be here tonight. I know what contribution he can make. And for those of us who are interested in development, let us now give Honorable Douglas that listening here to educate us, to inform us as it relates to the development of Monjon, of Rivestiric and Grand Four, as it relates to national issues of development. And let me also introduce him as the Minister for NEP, National Employment Program, Mr. Douglas, the mic is yours.
Let me say good evening to the wonderful people of Monjon and it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight. Good evening to all of you, including those on the outside. Good evening and I'm very happy that you are here so that we can interact together tonight. Honorable Dr. Kenneth Daru, Honorable Ivor Stevenson, who is the Parliamentary Representative for this area, and Mrs. Stevenson, who is here with us tonight. Honorable Johnson Drygo, the Minister for Agriculture. Honorable Justin Charles, Minister for Youth, Culture and Sports. Mr. Nicholas Esprit. Honorable Casillas Daru, Minister for Kalinago Affairs and Parliamentary Representative for the Kalinago Territory, for the Salibier constituency. Let me also recognize two long-serving stalwarts who I saw tonight in the presence of Solomon Pascal and Dr. Tousa. And all of the other wonderful people from the Monjon community. And I have some very good friends in the audience, and sorry, from Monjon and from, from Grand Four and from the rest of the constituency. I want to say good night to each and every one of you. It's a pleasure for me to be here tonight. We are here tonight, brothers and sisters, because at the end of the day, there is one Dominica for all of us to live, to work and to grow in. Don't matter what happens to us, don't matter wherever you go in the world to live, at the end of the day, the Commonwealth of Dominica, this land that God has given to us, will always be our own and our home, brothers and sisters. So there is a time when we have to put party colors aside. We have to do like the Americans and after the election, Donald Trump is the President of America and all Americans rally behind their president for the benefit of America. And so it is in Dominica, we must rally behind the government of Dominica to ensure that development comes to the people of Dominica. Because when development comes to Monjon, it is not only labor rights that benefit. When development comes to the Grand Four constituency, it is not only people in red t-shirt that will benefit. When the Parrep does washrooms and we do housing and we put people on NEP so that they will be able to get up every morning and go to a job that at the end of the month will pay them a salary to feed their children and to pay their rents, it is not workers or labor rights, it is Dominicans, brothers and sisters. And when the government comes to Monjon, it is the government of Dominica for all Dominicans. Whenever the Prime Minister decides to call the election, he will call an election. And what happened, happened and we will have a chance to vote again. But for the time being, the government of Dominica remains the government of every single Dominican, brothers and sisters. Let us, let us get that clear. Let us make no mistake about it. Because we live in a world today, we live in a region, brothers and sisters, where things are tight, things are tight. Just last month, three thousand civil servants in Barbados were sent home, brothers and sisters. There is not one single hotel that have started anywhere in the region but in Dominica in the last year. Check it out for yourself. These are the facts, brothers and sisters. While governments in the region have been sending people home because their economies are contracting, not because of their fault, not because of anything they have done, but because of the world situation, money is tight to come by, brothers and sisters. There are no friendly governments in the world today giving money as they used to do in the nineteen eighties and nineteen seventies. So we have to come up with creative ways to ensure that we continue to bring the necessary services to make the lives of our Dominican people better. And that is why we are going around the country, brothers and sisters. You remember in the nineteen eighties, in nineteen ninety-three, bananas, brothers and sisters, lost the lucrative market on the British market in the United Kingdom, not because of anything that anybody in Dominica had done, not because of anything that Mary Eugenia Charles, God bless her soul, Prime Minister of Dominica at the time had done, but because there were big banana producing companies in Central America, in Peru and Costa Rica called Dole and Delmonte and Chiquita, who felt that it was unfair for Dominican bananas to enjoy preferential treatment in the United Kingdom. Because we were former colonies, our bananas could go into England and they would be paying us a higher price than even our bananas are actually worth. When they took us to cut, the WTO said everybody had to face the same condition on the market. They took away the preferential treatment and banana lost its pride of place. And that is why banana came under pressure. So it was Mary Eugenia Charles at the time in nineteen ninety-three that used her brilliance and came up with a program to allow high businessmen of high net worth, people with money in their pocket, extra money in their pocket, looking for another place to invest in the world. And she started the Economic Citizenship Program in nineteen ninety-three, brothers and sisters. That is not something that Roosevelt Skerritt get up in his bed one Friday morning and decide to start the program. The program started in nineteen ninety-three, the Economic Citizenship Program, that is what it was called. And the United Workers' Party was formed in nineteen eighty-eight, brothers and sisters, don't forget that, nineteen eighty-eight. And when that party was formed, they criticized the same program. The Chinese were here, the Taiwanese were here. Mammo brought them in with Grace Tong to do the Laiu River Hotel Program. It's not now we're trying to build hotels in Dominica, you know, not now, you know. Long time successive governments have been trying to build hotels in Dominica. And it was the same United Workers' Party that criticized the Freedom Party and said Ching Chong, go home. And they were asking the Taiwanese to go home, brothers and sisters. It was the same United Workers' Party before the nineteen ninety election, when we had election in nineteen ninety. And Eugenia Charles were very good friends with Ronald Reagan in the United States. And she had helped them to come to invade Grenada to take out the regime that had assassinated an entire government by firing squad. And Reagan was so grateful to the Prime Minister of Dominica at the time of Eugenia Charles. He decided to send his army here to build an international airport for us. Edison James wrote to the then United States government and said, don't come here and build no international airport, don't come to Dominica. So it is not we that started the citizenship program, brothers and sisters. When they came to power, when United Workers' Party came to power in nineteen ninety-five, all what they had criticized about the citizenship program, they apologized and they implemented what is called the re-engineered Economic Citizenship Program, but it was the same program, they didn't scrap it. So when you hear them criticizing the Labour Party today, that is not something new, brothers and sisters, not, not something that the Labour Party came up with. And every single applicant under the program had to come to Dominica for an interview when Mammo implemented the program. Edison James took out that requirement and he said, you don't want to come to Dominica, I will come and meet you wherever you are in the world, brothers and sisters. So they're doing as if it's now crooks and criminals coming, but there was a crooked Australian man called Christopher Skyes. And Edison James gave the priest Alexander a passport in a briefcase to bring to Australia for him and he was a criminal to, brothers and sisters. So that don't make them make you feel is something Roosevelt Skerritt get up in his bed and do. It is when we came to power, we tighten up the program, we tighten up the program and we have a strong due diligence process in place. That means every single applicant who apply under the Citizenship by Investment Program have to be thoroughly investigated from who was your mother, who was your father, what preschool you went to, who was your teacher in primary school, what church you went to, brothers and sisters, where you live in the world, what girlfriend you have, how much time you get married, how much houses you have, how much bank account you have. Every single detail of potential applicants right now have to be investigated, not by us, you know, by government, no? Not by government, you know? International firms around the world, in England, in New York, in Canada, international firms. And it is the client that must pay for that investigation. And when that due diligence, it is called, when that due diligence is performed on every client, those people, the companies who do that due diligence must put the report in an envelope and seal it and send it not back to the client, but back to the government. The client doesn't even know the nature of the investigation until the government receives it. And any single red flag that is raised about any potential applicant, they are automatically denied, brothers and sisters. And they want to tell you Roosevelt Skerritt have money giving people everywhere, going everywhere. That is malicious politics, that is wicked politics. And you know, I used to like politics when freedom and labor in the eighties used to have their thing because we would give our blows on the political platform, Pierrot and Rosie, and they would give their blows in the House of Assembly, we were in opposition at the time. But we never had that kind of antagonistic, violence oriented politics that we see today, brothers and sisters. We never had that. We were friends because we understood that Dominica was for all of us. At the end of the day, Dominica is all of us, we are all Dominicans at the end of the day. And it is all of us who must build this country. So when we came to power and we recognized that Edison James had the checkbook walking around in his back pocket signing. that Edison James had the cheque book walking around in his back pocket signing out of the account, he and a lady called Grace Tong, the same Grace Tong of Laio River Hotel, they were the ones who was signing money out of the escrow account. When we came to power, we tightened the thing up, proper management Roosevelt Skerritt put in place. And now no politician have access to the Economic Citizenship Bank accounts. All the money they said the prime minister going about helping people with, he must go and ask the FS, please, souple, give me 200,000 for housing in Monjon. Give me 100,000 to build a road in Lago in Portsmouth. Give me 200,000 for housing for Soufriya. Every single dollar coming out of that account. It is either the FS, the financial secretary, the budget controller, the director of the FIU, the financial, um, unit, that was the CBI unit, sorry, Ambassador Nantan that must sign, public servant, no politician, no minister, no politician have access to those funds, brothers and sisters. And those funds are well accounted for. We have been to the parliament, to the House of Assembly on more than four occasions to report to the nation about the proper management of the Citizenship by Investment Program. And every name of every applicant, whether they fail, whether they are successful, is gazetted in the gazette. The print you have to issue a gazette every month, who going on leave, who going on maternity leave, who getting promotion in the public service, who getting an acting appointment, every single affair of the government is registered in the gazette. And you can go to the print you and pick up a gazette and see every single applicant. So these are the checks and the balances that are in place for the proper management of the Citizenship by Investment Program. When we came to office, we recognized that it's not only hotels we have to build, brothers and sisters. The program as it was originally intended was to build hotels. So they started with the Laio River Hotel. And you know that United Workers Party made a mess. Up to now, that hotel cannot finish because of Edison James and the United Workers Party. So we tightened up the program. And there's another aspect of the program called the Economic Diversification Fund. So you know you diversify in agriculture, you do not only plant bananas. You have a little bit of vegetables, you have some ground provision, you have some dashing, you have some yam, you have some coconuts. So if perchance something go wrong with your bananas, like we have black cigar toka, you depend on your root crops, your dashing, your yams, or you have your little vegetables. So as the yams and the kush kush taking, the tanya taking time took ripe, you have your little lettuce selling. So the government implemented a special account, a special fund with the Citizenship by Investment revenue. And we put money into a special account so that we could do other things with the money other than just building hotels. So yes, we have the Kapinski Hotel in Portsmouth happening right now. And there are about 150 people permanently employed in the construction there. And when it is finished, there will be about 200 people employed. And you, the people of Monjon, will be able to plant and cultivate fresh fruits and vegetables, root crops and food to supply to that hotel. We have another hotel to come in Portsmouth again called Silver Beach because of the Citizenship by Investment, that is more employment. We have a hotel to come in Salisbury, a Dominican, a local Dominican guy who left Dominica years ago, he went to live in Monstrat. After the volcano erupted in Monstrat, the British government gave them an option to move to England. He moved to Anguilla. And he's been a very successful businessman in the development of hotels. He has decided to come back to Dominica using revenue from the Citizenship by Investment Program to do a hotel in Salisbury. So we not only doing things in Labour Party health constituencies, we doing things all over the country because we recognize that when the tide rises, all boats will float. Whether you have a blue cap or a red cap, all boats will float, brothers and sisters. That is what the Dominica Labour Party is all about. We not seeing any colors, that's why we are here tonight and we not afraid to be here tonight. And that's why we want everybody on the outside to come inside and ask your questions so that we can answer the questions. So that when you hear them talking foolish on the radio, you will be educated to know what is truth from what is lies, brothers and sisters. Because you have to know the truth. And we not afraid of the truth. After we equip you with the truth, whatever you do with the truth is up to you. But it is our responsibility as government to equip you with the truth, brothers and sisters. And Dr. Daru told you just today, today, this morning at Fortune Hotel, part of the Citizenship by Investment Program is being used to implement a program for single mothers, brothers and sisters. We know many single mothers we have in Dominica that was struggling before. A man give them one child, he leave and go because he not supporting his child. They have to go and love another man to support the child because they under pressure. He give them a next one, we know the realities of Dominica, brothers and sisters. And they cannot go to work because they cannot leave the infant children in the house. They cannot pay daycare because they don't have the money to pay the daycare or to pay someone to take care of their child. So the government using the Citizenship by Investment Program, implement a program where we using some of those funds so that from the time you know you get pregnant, your first trimester, they call it this, from your first month, you can go to doctor in dignity and pride. You don't have to stay home and hide. You don't have to stay home because you broke and you don't have money to go buy Doctor Farrara or, or, or Doctor Odiamma. The government put an insurance in place. So from the time a single mother is pregnant, the government will pay for your medical bills. And people outside there criticizing that. What is, what about that is to criticize? Every child under the age of three years, toddlers, they're not going to school yet. They have to get pampers, they have to get milk. And you know, children drinking milk and if you, you must put cereal in the milk because they're not drinking the milk alone. And it's expensive, you can buy needle for them again. It's expensive cereal they want to drink and wheat and honey. That is what they want to drink, brothers and sisters. It's, it's, I'm telling you, it's not joke. And you cannot buy, it's not, people do have diarrhea again, you know. You must buy pampers every month, I have to find a money to buy pampers. What about that is there to criticize? And the government is saying that they will come in and they will help you through an insurance. And later, we will add more people to it. Just like what we do with the people that are 60 and over that can go to Princess Margaret Hospital now and get free healthcare. Young people that are 18 and under, as long as you still going to school, you can go and get free medical care. Uh, the Public Support Program. People who were on deathbed, had it not been for the Red Clinic where they could rush and go, they would have been dead, brothers and sisters, dead. Before this government implemented the intensive care unit at the Princess Margaret Hospital, we had no intensive care in Dominica. So if your brother and your sister end up in an accident on a transport or a motorbike or they end up some kind of ailment, take them for no reason, there was no way of saving that life in Dominica, brothers and sisters, until this government implemented the intensive care unit at the PMH. It has something about that to criticize. It has something about that to criticize. That is not politics, brothers and sisters. That is, we talking about life and death. We talking about our very welfare. We talking about our well-being as Dominicans and you have people criticizing that. Brothers and sisters, these are the facts that we want to educate you about. That is why we are here tonight. We are senior citizens. We are senior citizens right here in Monjon who have contributed to the development of this community, we know that. So because they didn't work for government and they didn't pay provident fund and they didn't pay social security, is any reason why they should live the rest of their life, their twilight years in misery? A little $300 a month, what is $300, huh? $300 by the time you pay mapping and you pay your light, you can't even buy grocery. You understand what I'm saying? And the government is coming and giving you that so that you can live out your years in pride and dignity. We know about people with pit latrine. If somebody come at your home and you have a pit latrine, you too shame to even send them somewhere and pee pee, brothers and sisters. You having a little first communion, a little confirmation, you even afraid to invite a funeral, la veie, la veie. You even afraid to have a happy hour because you don't want people, you don't have to give people boozy to go in the pit latrine to use the washroom, you shame. Today, the government is coming in and giving people a sense of pride and dignity. We not asking you who you vote or where you vote or what you vote. We don't want to know that, we don't want to know that. You are a Dominican, you have a green passport and you have been born here, you are raised here, you grew up here, you entitled to what the government have to offer, brothers and sisters. It's not tiff we tiff the money, it's not drugs we sell for the money. Antiga have Citizenship by Investment Program. Sen Kids have Citizenship by Investment Program building big hotel. Grenada just start a program. Canada have a program. One of my colleagues, I don't know if it's Doctor Daru, tell you, America, United States of America have a citizenship program, $500,000 and you can be entitled to green card and passport and live and work in America. So, so, so it do have nothing we can be good at then. So because we beating them at their own game and it's not even a game we invent, we just make it better. People criticizing that, brothers and sisters. You even going as far as talking about resignation and people have to stand down. In a democracy, people went to the polls, they voted for the man. They vote for the man once in 2005. They come back again, they vote for the man twice again in 2009. People come back again, they satisfied with what the man is doing. They vote for him again in 2014. You talking about resignation? And you saying you love democracy? What democracy you love? You like them at Boca in Roseau. The police tell you to stop your, stop your thing, they give you permission, they nice. They give you permission, they tell you stop at 3 o'clock. You agree, you take your pen and you sign, I will stop at 3 PM sharp. You so troublesome, you going on the platform at 5 minutes to 3 o'clock. And when they tell you to stop, you say nobody can stop you. So if nobody cannot stop you when you in opposition, is if, if Sehatuka, if by chance you happen to become prime minister, who will stop you then, brothers and sisters? You so lawless as leader of the opposition, is if you become prime minister, you will change? Show me your friends and your ways and I will tell you who you are. Show me, show me your friends and your ways. Show me your friends. Any one of you all can go, let's say, let's say one of us getting married and we pay Rosalie Bay to keep our wedding reception. And we make our invitation, we write them out, we put them in the envelope, we seal them, we send them out. So anybody can just put their clothes on, they say, "Come in wedding then." It's like, "You're coming wedding then." It's like that. You pack your bag, you put your suit on, you buy a ticket and you go quite gayana, say you going to heads of government meeting, heads of government meeting. I mean, I mean, come on, man. You end up in America, brothers and sisters, so let me tell you that. You end up January 1st, New Year's Day, when everybody enjoying their self with their family, who eating ham, eating ham, who eating turkey, eating your little turkey, who make their little shodo, make their little shodo and thing and people with their family, January 1st, you end up quite America on television criticizing your country, the land of your birth. So wait a while now, wait a while, so let's say you have your family, you and your brother and your father die and he leave the property for you and your brother. He leave the upstairs for your brother and he leave downstairs for you. You so vexed, you don't get upstairs. You burning down the house, the very house you have to live in, you burning it down. So when you destroy Dominica and when you kill the goose that laying the golden egg and you win the election, what you going to have to be able to continue the programs? That, that, these are the facts, brothers and sisters. That is the reality of the situation we dealing with. So we not talking about labor and workers tonight. We will leave that for whenever the prime minister called the election. That is not our concern tonight. What we talking about, brothers and sisters, is being statesmen. At the end of the day, you are a Dominican first and you are everything else after, brothers and sisters. So we are here tonight to tell you that every single program that the government have will touch the lives of the people in the Monjon area. Be rest assured that we will take care of your needs. We know that some people have received and others are still to receive. But we cannot do everybody at the same time. One at a time, little by little, as we go along, brothers and sisters, we will be able to touch the lives of every single person. I am very happy about the performance of the NEP in this constituency. Very well, keep up the good work. From the NEP, you have your jobs, it is up to you to keep your job. Perform well and you will have your job forever. We started a program for the youngsters in, in Grand Four. Right, they just got another set of, of chicks to develop. A thousand chicks, they got a thousand before, they have another thousand. The abattoir is there, the abattoir will pay them for every single chick in the garries. And if the people in Monjon have a good idea you want to implement, come to your PIREP, come to the government and we will implement it for your benefit, brothers and sisters. So we want you to feel reassured. We want you to feel assured in the government that you have elected. Tonight, I want to place on public record that I have every respect and appreciation for your PIREP. I say without fear of contradiction that that is the first hard working PIREP that you have gotten in this constituency. Without fear of contradiction. I sit with him in cabinet, I sit with him in cabinet and as a cabinet member, I am not at liberty to divulge cabinet discussion. But I can tell you and suffice it to say, I have every respect for your PIREP. And in fact, all of the PIREPs on the east are doing a tremendous job in cabinet. From the leadership of Nurse Charles and Peter Seja and Cassius Daru and Kenneth Daru and even Drago all the way in Cassibrews. These people are doing a tremendous job, working hard. And let me tell you, you cannot be in Roosevelt Skerritt Cabinet and Skylak, brothers and sisters. From time you see you know you get up at 8 o'clock on Tuesday morning, you have to put yourself right, you have to make sure you in check because that man remembering every single thing. If the man give you 100,000 dollars for a road, the man wanted to come for every five cents that he remember and he coming and watching the road and he telling you, that road you don't spend the money there. That is proper management and you must account. That is the height of this government, that is where we have taken the country, brothers and sisters. And so we are going to continue to work for you. Don't worry about no election, there is no election on the horizon. We don't care about the election now, we doing the work, we want to hear from you. We want to hear from you because budget is coming up. We want to know what it is we can implement to make your lives better. I have in my ministry, I have, I will just open two brand new multipurpose packhouses. Those packhouses are responsible for taking every single fresh produce that you can plant. So I want you to go back to your gardens, brothers and sisters. We are giving you all of the support from fertilizer to inputs. We even giving you if you want any people to come and help you to plant and when you ready to harvest, they'll be there to harvest with you. And then when you harvest your crops, you have a place to bring it so that it can be sold, brothers and sisters. Brother John who told, Brother John who told you that we have the markets, right now we have markets begging us for crops like crazy. The guys tell me they working 24/7 in the packhouse. People want yam, they want dashing, they want sweet potato, they want cucumbers, they want seasoning pepper. Just plant and we have the markets, we have the boats. We even getting more boats now because people interested, people like Dominica fresh produce. Because people interested, people like Dominica fresh produce. They love our produce. So the more we can produce, the more revenue you can get. And we have put all the plans in place. The government from the Citizenship by Investment Programme put ten million dollars, you know, in aid bank for farmers. Ten million dollars for you. And if you have problems accessing the money, check your pal rep. Let him come to cabinet with the issues, we will sort them out so that you can have the money in your hands. The housing revolution have eight different components, brothers and sisters. Washroom is one component. Home renovation is another component. We building complete houses. I just saw on Facebook Honorable Peter Seja, who is not here unfortunately because out of state. I saw him giving out about five houses to needy people. That's people that need those houses. They're not workers or labour or freedom. That's Dominicans in need of housing, brothers and sisters. And that is what we are all about. We don't see colours. In September, when you ready to give uniform and give schoolbook and give scholarship and give money for state college, we don't see colours. We don't ask the parent, we don't ask the student, who is your parent? Who is your mother? Who is your father? We don't ask those questions, brothers and sisters. Because we believe that we are there to do a job to care for the people of Dominica and that is our only concern. So tonight, tonight, we want to hear from you, all your questions. All those on the outside that making noise, come and ask your question so you can get the answer to your question tonight. All of them. So my brothers and sisters, let us remain focused, let us remain disciplined. We have a lot of work to do, that's a lot of work to do. And the government have some major projects in the pipeline unfolding. We have geothermal energy that will bring our light bills down. You know what you paying for lights now at your home? Imagine instead of paying two hundred and two hundred dollars a month, your light bill come down to a hundred dollars or fifty dollars. And you have your two fifty in your pocket to extend your house. To invest in something else, brothers and sisters. Look, the Prime Minister tell us that he has secured the funding for the international airport. We are working on your behalf. We are working, so don't lose hope. Don't lose hope, have faith and be patient. Because this Labour Party government is the only party with a plan, we have a plan. Because we see misery. We see misery. In two thousand, we see misery. We get the country on the brink of collapse. We lost two soldiers who died with their boots on, fighting for the country. Fighting for the country, brothers and sisters. They are national heroes today. And it is in, it's their legacy that we continue to live. Because we have to ensure that we are successful to make sure that these two soldiers did not die in vain. That is our mission, brothers and sisters. Wherever they are in heaven tonight, they have to continue to smile down on us. Because they have left us here to do a job to serve you, the people of Dominica. That is why, never before in the issue of Dominica, no government never go around meeting people for people to ask you question. Government never do that, government wasn't doing that. But we're not afraid to meet the people. We're not afraid of the questions because we serve you. So we are here to make sure that every aspect of your life is taken care of. Healthcare is dealt with, housing is dealt with, agriculture production is dealt with, sports is dealt with. Every single infrastructure is being dealt with, brothers and sisters. And we have the money to do it. We have the leadership to do it. We have the experience to do it. And we have you, the supporters, we are going to do it for. Thank you very much, brothers and sisters.
Thank you, thank you so much. Uh, that is not enough, my people. Come on, let me hear you more. One, one. Okay, I think that was a student contribution by Honorable Douglas. And Honorable Douglas, you have made me proud, I can tell you. For many of the government's programmes that are benefiting so many of us here in Monjon, in Grand Four River Street and all throughout the nation. I think you have articulated these programmes quite well. And everybody listening, right here in Monjon and on the media, I know for sure that at least you learned quite a lot from the presentation of Honorable Douglas. I want to say too, we have heard the contributions from our other speakers. We had Honorable Drago, who said quite a lot on agriculture. We had Honorable Daru, who spoke quite a lot on the national development of health and some of the other constituencies or health districts that will be benefiting from the government's programmes for, for developing health. And here came again Honorable Douglas with his student contribution, making mention of so many different areas where we, the people of this country, we, the people who live in these constituencies, are benefiting. My brothers and sisters, let's give a big round of applause for all our presenters. And we are coming to one of the very important parts of our meeting is questions. And we hope to give you answers. But let me say to you, my dear people, we have had a very, very long meeting. And you'll acknowledge the fact that we started late. And we had invited all the large numbers of you that are outside and inside. We had invited here at six o'clock. So we had one hour delay. It means that all our ministers who have presented, had the meeting finished, been finished now, they would be driving within one hour and be back home safely. But you can see that they have presented quite well this evening. And we are all tired and we have to get ready for next day for our cabinet meeting. So we'll entertain a few questions. And I would like those persons who are going to ask the questions, please, let us not be very long, let us ask the question. We will take the first five questions, we'll give you answers and we will see whether we can take another five questions. So you are now invited, please, to come forward with your questions. For those of you who have your concerns, let me hear you. But I, I, I want to say quite clearly that please respect the meeting. Let us have the decency of the meeting. Let us make sure that we have order, continue in this meeting. And let us let the world, let us let Dominica know that in Monjon, we have had a very positive meeting tonight. So the floor is now open for questions.
Excuse me, please. Excuse me, please. I was quite happy to hear Mr Douglas articulate that the CBI is doing well. And that the monies of the CBI is being put to good use. He's also spoken about the people, how they've done the due diligence and that was articulated by Mr Daru. I would like to know why the big disparity in the year that is given on the gazette for Mon Farad haven't been given a Dominican passport, which is two thousand and nine as gazetted. And we have had it on record where the minister, that is Minister Baron, has said, also the Prime Minister has said that he received his passport in two thousand and fifteen. So I want to know why the disparity in the years in which Mr Mon Farad got his Dominican citizenship. And also, if you can explain, why is it we have, it is called Citizenship by Investment? I hear the invest, um, citizenship part, but I've not heard of the investment. So I would like to know about the investments.
Thank you, next question.